Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all of its people. Lord, we ask you to guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. We acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pay our respects to elders past and present. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open and I remind all councillors of your obligations to declare material, personal and conflicts of interest where relevant and requirements of such to remove yourself from the council chamber for debate and voting where applicable. I also remind councillors that the rules around those have recently been amended and I encourage you to become familiar with those. I will not read that again for the balance of this session. Councillors, are there any apologies? Councillor Landers.
Mr Chair, I advise that councillor Hammond and councillor Matic will be absent today and I move that they be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
It's been moved by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Adams, that councillor Hammond and councillor Matic be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks Chair. Councillor Cook will be absent for the duration of this meeting so I move that she be granted a leave of absence.
May I please have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Shree, that councillor Cook be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, in our agenda today, you will notice a motion of appreciation. I draw that to your attention and I call on somebody to move that, please. The Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that this council acknowledges and commemorates the 15th anniversary of the sister-city relationship between Brisbane and the city of Chongqing in China. Sister city...
Sorry.
Thank you. She's keen.
Sorry.
The deputy mayor is very supportive of this motion, which is great to see. I go on to say that sister-city arrangements continue to build significant civic and cultural ties between cities and foster relationships through sporting, educational and social exchanges, as well as developing links through tourism, trade and business.
It's been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor, as read by the Lord Mayor. Is there any debate? The Lord Mayor.
Thank you. This is something that we should acknowledge because relationships between cities are very important. Now, we don't control what happens when it comes to relationships between nations, international relations at that level, but we know that friendships and relationships between cities can be very, very important and sometimes more so than those nation-level relationships. And it's relationships between mayors and councils, between cities and the businesses and people in those cities that we're celebrating today by acknowledging the 15th anniversary of the sister-city relationship with Chongqing. Chongqing is an incredibly large city. It's a city of around 31 million people, so in one city, far more than the population of Australia combined, and it is really at the heart of China. It is a city which is important for heavy industry, one of the biggest producers of automobiles, with a production of over 3 million vehicles per year and 8 million motorcycles. It's also one of the most visited cities in China as well, being at the beginning of the Yangtze River, the longest river in Asia, and also a stopping off point for people visiting the Three Gorges Dam and other sites along the Yangtze. It's known as the mountain city owing to the mountainous terrain surrounding the city. And the sister-city relationship was signed, the agreement was signed on the 11th of October 2005, and that was at the 2005 Asia-Pacific Cities Summit, which is something that Brisbane is proud to be the host city of. That particular agreement was signed during the period of Campbell Newman as Lord Mayor and it was at the Mayor's Forum as part of that Asia-Pacific Cities Summit. Chongqing has been a longstanding supporter of the Asia-Pacific Cities Summit and we've seen delegations from Chongqing attending the 2007, 2011, 2015 and 2019 Asia-Pacific Cities Summit. The former deputy mayor of Chongqing, Madame Tan, was an attendee at the Asia-Pacific Cities Summit last year and I got to meet her and speak with her about the future opportunities between our two cities. And the relationship between our two cities continues to grow despite the temporary situation that we have now, obviously, which has prevented international travel and it has obviously put a temporary pause on normal activities that would happen, but these relationships are always about the long term. In recent years, over $2 million in outcomes has been generated from the education, training, trade and tourism sectors between Brisbane and Chongqing. Former Lord Mayor Graham Quirk led a business mission to China in September 2017 and the delegation visited Beijing, Chongqing, Chengdu and also our other sister-city in China, Shenzhen as well. I know that the deputy mayor has also visited Chongqing and I'm sure she will speak on that, but there is strong and ongoing support from this council for the relationship between our two cities and I do believe it's an appropriate thing today to acknowledge that relationship and to reconfirm our commitment to it. Brisbane is fortunate to have strong ties at the municipal level in Chongqing and I particularly want to acknowledge the mayor of Chongqing as well for that relationship and the commitment to that relationship and we will continue to build on that to create a better future for our two mutual cities. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers? I see no further speakers. Oh, excuse me, councillor Huang.
Thank you, Mr Chair. It is my pleasure to stand in this chamber to congratulate on the 15 years of sister-city relationship between Brisbane and the Chinese city of Chongqing. Lord Mayor has already gave a very detailed description of the relationship, but I think it is important that we understand the importance of the city of Chongqing in China. There are four provincial cities in China and Chongqing is one of them. It is a mega-sized city as Lord Mayor described. It has 31 million people in there. But think about it, what are the other three provincial-level cities? They are Beijing, Shanghai, Tianjin and Chongqing is at that level. So it shows the importance they see Brisbane as a sister-city. And can I tell the chamber that Shanghai has a sister-state of Queensland, so we are as important as the state government in their point of view. And also, Chongqing is important in the Chinese political landscape. The leadership of Chongqing is a standing member of China's powerful Politburo, thus the top decision-making body in Chinese government. So the leadership is someone of a national importance. And Chongqing is also rich in culture. It is a multicultural city. It has lots of ethnicities in this city. And many of you would have attended events in the Chinese community seeing a showcase change and it was actually originated in Chongqing and Sichuan province. So that shows the cultural richness of this city. And also, there's a strong Chongqing community organisation in Brisbane, which have been participating in numerous of the events. Chongqing is also, as the Lord Mayor described, an important business centre, manufacturing centre in China, but it's also the gateway for China to enter Middle East and to a certain extent Eastern Europe. So the trade and other benefits, business benefits cannot be underestimated in Chongqing. And also, I understand Chongqing has been a designated national innovation hub, so I think there are lots of things we can work with Chongqing to create that innovation hub between the two countries. I remember councillor Adams were in Chongqing last year and I spoke to her briefly before the meeting. I'm sure she's going to tell you more about the Chongqing cuisine, which is mainly chili and also Chinese pepper. So Chongqing's famous for its hot and spicy meals. And can I conclude by saying, normally in the Western culture, hot and spicy is probably not a relationship to describe between sister-cities, but in Chinese it is. So can I say on this note, to congratulate 15 years of sister-city relationships, I hope this hot and spicy relationship continues. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I too would like to stand and acknowledge the 15th anniversary of our sister-city relationship between Chongqing and Brisbane. They are very important, all of our sister-city relationships, and it's important that we recognise, as the Lord Mayor and councillor Huang mentioned, the fantastic opportunities we have with those cultural ties, fostering sporting, particularly educational with Chongqing and social exchanges as well. We do have a lot of things in common with Brisbane and Chongqing, they are both located on a major river, actually at the junction of two rivers, like we are, I suppose, with the Brisbane and the Bremer as well. And like Brisbane, Chongqing is on a floodplain and very recently had very, very severe floods in their city as well. One thing we don't have in common, of course, is that this mega-city is home to approximately 33 million people. So it is a very dense city, but it is a beautiful city, mountainous, very green. They love the concept of the green building because there are plants everywhere, but it's a significant inland sea freight port and a very big part of their Belt and Road project, hence the Smart China Expo that I did go to represent Brisbane at last year and talk about the opportunities there are there with trade with Australia. I saw firsthand the vibrant people, their culture and their businesses. It is very, very exciting and as councillor Huang said, the cuisine is spectacular and the mouth-numbing spicy hot pot, we have nothing like it here in Brisbane and it is worth the trip for that alone. I did make some key relationships over there which were very, very fruitful for our relationships in Brisbane. I did meet with Ms Tang Liangzhe, the mayor of Chongqing at the time, with Madame Pan Yichen, the vice mayor of Chongqing's municipal people's government, and as councillor Huang said, the representative on the Politburo there, Mr Juhan Changjun, the director general of Chongqing Liangxiang New Area, and many, many others. There were many sister-cities that Chongqing has, I think we're one of 45, I think. We had a very large round table where everyone got to share their experiences from their hometowns and their relationships with Chongqing as well. After returning in August last year, there was a delegation of Chongqing vocational teachers that came to Brisbane for a 10-week training course at TAFE. It was wonderful to welcome them back here and despite the pandemic, we've had a group of 71 vocational teachers who'll start their 10-week training on today with a virtual Brisbane training provider. So that is very exciting to continue, even during these difficult times, our relationship with our sister-city as well. We continue to support our Brisbane businesses and students through international internship programmes and formerly the Sister Cities Internship Programme, and we have always had a student representative from Chongqing since we started the programme a couple of years ago, which is great to see. So thank you very much, Lord Mayor, and to the city of Brisbane for continuing these strong ties. We'll continue these cultural, educational and social ties with Chongqing and look forward to another 15 years of sister-city relationships.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. Interesting timing for this motion to come to council, given the very recent discussion of laws at a federal government level to crack down on these agreements. This may be the last time in which we have a motion that acknowledges and commemorates an anniversary of a sister-city relationship with China, Chair, because we know that the Foreign Minister is going to have final say on what local councils, educational institutions and state governments are able to do when it comes to agreements and sister-city agreements just like this. They want to ensure that every local council in Australia speaks with one voice and that's the voice of the federal government, that's the voice of people like Andrew Hasty and people like Barnaby Joyce and people like George Christensen. So good on you, Lord Mayor, for bringing this and within your party, bringing a different voice to that debate, but with other voices like that at a national level, I think this may be one of the last times we have these sort of cooperative relationships.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, just briefly on the motion, that's something new I've heard today and I just want to make reference to the fact that it's wonderful to see councillor Krista Adams and Dan Andrews in lockstep about the importance of the Belt and Road initiative and I just found it fascinating. I have no idea what's going on today.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor Adams.
Claim to be misrepresented.
Noted.
Dan was a big fan of the Belt and Road arrangements with China and we heard councillor Adams, in her own words, stand up and praise it.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order.
Claim to be misrepresented.
Yep, noted.
I don't know why, she very clearly in her own speech acknowledged the importance of the Belt and Road arrangements and certainly, I'm just noting on the record here today that it's lovely to see councillor Krista Adams, the Liberal deputy mayor, and the Labor Premier for Victoria, Dan Andrews, on the same page.
Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I clearly said that Chongqing is an important city in China's Belt and Road project. I did not claim anything else.
Further speakers? The Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Well, it's pretty clear who the grown-ups are in this chamber today. One side is committed to the future of a strong bilateral relationship and another side that wants to play pathetic political games and make cheap shots. But that is what the people of Brisbane know exists. That is why they lost the election just a few months ago. That is why they keep losing elections. We will continue to do what's best in the interests of the people of Brisbane to support jobs and growth and economic growth and activity, cultural exchanges, and these relationships are very important to our city and will continue to be. Thank you.
I'll now put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
And those against, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnston.
Second.
And seconded by councillor Griffiths. Please ring the bells. Councillors, we'll be voting from our places. All right, so if you just hold steady, we won't ask you to move, we'll ask you to show your hands at a moment. All councillors are present. All right, all those in favour, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Please lower your hands. And those against, please say no and raise your hands. And councillors, those abstaining, please raise your hands. Councillors, under the new rules, if you don't vote, it's deemed to be a no vote, okay? Under the rules that we're now working with. No, 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 the rules have changed. 43... Which one is it? 24283 says that if you do not vote, it's deemed to be a no. Would people like to vote again?
Do I have a five?
Okay, all right. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 23 in favour and 1 abstention.
And the noes as well. You have to read the... So councillors, as you well know, on the 12th of October, the rules were changed and as part of that... Not that one, the other one. Councillors, I will find the relevant section, but the rules changed recently on October 12 and that if a person does not participate in the vote, it is deemed to be not abstention but a no vote, all right? So I've informed you of that. I'll find the relevant section. We will now continue.
Yeah, point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
If there are any other procedural changes you're aware of, perhaps you'd outline them for us.
There are many, but that's the one that was relevant at that point. We will now move on to... I will find the relevant section.
And point of order, Mr Chairman.
Point of order to you.
For the efficient running of the meeting, perhaps you could just outline for us if we, you know, there are other changes we should be aware of.
There are other changes you should be aware of. Councillors, I'll now move on to...
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
If you do a point of order and it's the same as the last one, that's an active disorder.
Yes. Could you please outline the changes for us?
That's an active disorder and I don't accept your point of order. I will now accept, I will now move to confirmation of minutes.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
I move dissent in your ruling.
Yep.
I'm asking for a procedural matter to be clarified and as a matter of courtesy, respect and professionalism, I would have thought that that would be a reasonable request.
Well, no, councillor Johnston, you don't get to debate these things and also you spend a great deal of time in our meetings lecturing us about how you know everything better than everybody else does, so I assumed that you would know these things. Now, is there a second? Is there a second?
Nothing.
There is no second. All right. We're moving on.
You just took over and started.
No, 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 councillor Johnston. Councillor Johnston, please cease interjecting.
Point of order. I move dissent in your ruling.
Second. Councillors, there's a dissent in my ruling. All those in favour, say aye. I've moved by councillor Johnston, seconded by councillor Strunk. It's a procedural motion. All those who dissent, say aye.
Aye.
And those who are against, say no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnston. And nobody else. All right, councillors, we'll move on to the minutes. May I please have a resolution to accept the minutes?
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,629th meeting held on Tuesday 8 September 2020 be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Adams, that the minutes of the 4,629th meeting of council held on the 8th of September 2020 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, I draw to your attention the item on the agenda, question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or a Chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Mackay.
My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, pedestrian safety on shared pathways is a growing concern in the community, highlighted by an incident over the weekend with an elderly pedestrian. What can the state government do to ensure we have more adequate enforcement around speed limits on our shared pathways for the safety of all users?
The Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. This is a very pertinent question from councillor Mackay. Like all of us here, I know you were shocked about the accident on Jackpech Bridge where a 67-year-old user of the path, a gentleman, was struck by a cyclist and left bloodied on a shared path. Now, as local councillors, I know that we all would have received complaints along those lines right across the city of people on shared paths not really behaving with respect to other users of the path and in some cases behaving quite dangerously and putting the safety of others at risk. Now, across the city and the agenda of this administration is very clear, we want to encourage more people to travel actively. We want more people on foot, more people on bikes, more people on scooters and a range of other mobility devices that would help free up traffic congestion and provide alternatives to private motor vehicle use. And our investment in bikeways and new infrastructure and bridges and public transport is very supportive of that aim. But there is, and I think this brings it to the fore, a significant challenge when it comes to the use of shared paths. Now, there are some, I have no doubt, that would argue that, oh, there's an easy solution to this. It should all be separated. Everyone should be separated. Now, that is something that we certainly accommodate where there is the opportunity to do so, where there is the space to do so, but there is always going to be situations where there are shared paths. Now, there are a lot of legacy paths in the city, sections of Riverwalk, bike paths and shared paths, and even in fact, the humble suburban footpath is a classic example of a shared path. Queensland is quite unique in that cyclists can ride on a footpath. It is perfectly legal to ride on a footpath in Queensland. In other parts of the country, that is not necessarily the case. So shared paths are a fact of life. Some of them are narrow, some of them are wide, and obviously where we can, we introduce fully separated situations. But the idea that every path can be fully separated is as unrealistic as the idea that every road should be a motorway. There shouldn't be any traffic lights, you should be able to go top speed 100 k's an hour on every road. That is the equivalent of saying every path should be separated. It's just not going to happen and it's not feasible. So just like the road network, we have some sections where they are motorway standard, where you can travel at high speeds. You also have other sections which are very slow activity, high-activity areas where there is sharing between pedestrians, cyclists, all types of vehicle and road users, and in that case, it is quite well-accepted that speed limits change in those different situations. So the 100 k or 110 k an hour on a motorway expectation is not there when you're travelling through Stone's Corner or when you're travelling through a school zone or other areas of high pedestrian activity. And the same must go for our shared paths. And it is time now to set up our city and our region for the future and to make sure that people can use shared paths safely. Now, a key part of that, I believe, is to have some form of enforceable speed limit on our shared paths. Now, there are already sections of bikeway and shared paths and bridges across the city which have a speed limit. The go-between, sorry, not the go-between, the Goodwill Bridge, a state government bridge, has a 10 kilometre an hour speed limit. There are other sections of bikeway and Riverwalk which have a speed limit. Unfortunately, there is a gap in the legislation which in most cases means that this is unenforceable. So while the desire is there to have some kind of speed restriction or limit, it is not actively enforced and it could be argued legally that it is not enforceable. So we need to have a look at this going forward. There are going to be more people using our bikeways and shared paths and we want to make sure that pedestrians and cyclists are safe, we want to make sure that we encourage this form of active travel, but we need some action taken. Now, council can't change state laws, but what I can tell the people of Brisbane and councillors in this chamber, that once the election is done, I will be engaging actively with whoever the Minister for Transport is to see that we can address this issue, to get some form of joint cooperation and way forward to manage the use of our shared paths, to make sure that they are safe and where necessary, to enforce speed limits on those shared paths. This would be a positive step forward for the people of Brisbane.
Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, in 2013, your mentor, former boss and rock climbing partner Campbell Newman tried to sell off the playing fields at Balmoral State High School to the highest bidder. After much deserved public outrage, Newman decided to give the 2.75 hectares of land to council instead for $0. Back then, the school had 460 students, next year they have 820 students enrolled. As a growing school, they need the extra space, but Brisbane City Council still hasn't responded to requests to give it back to Balmoral State High School. It's easy, all the Lord Mayor has to do is say yes, Chair. If council chooses not to cooperate, the transfer of the land could take years and this LMP administration knows that. It's time to invest in our youth and do the right thing here. A petition that was led by Di Farma, the state member for Belimba, has just closed, calling for council to give this land back to Education Queensland, receiving 1,000 signatures. Lord Mayor, the community has clearly spoken, they want you to finally close this sorry Newman saga and give the land back to Balmoral State High School before term one next year. Lord Mayor, will you commit to handing this land back to Balmoral State High School for free and do the right thing for the local community?
The Lord Mayor.
Well, that's a really interesting question. Other than an opportunity to talk about Campbell Newman, which they can never avoid, they are obsessed with Campbell Newman and it is quite unhealthy. It's an unhealthy obsession. But I just wonder what the motivation of this question might be.
No, councillors, allow the answer to be heard in silence, please. Lord Mayor.
We've come into this place or had council meetings week after week in recent times which strangely appear to be from Labor about the state election and today, true to form, we see another politically motivated question. But what...
You wrote it for him, Mark.
But, Mr Chair...
Councillor Cassidy, please stop interjecting. Councillor Johnston, please stop interjecting. Lord Mayor, please... Lord Mayor, please. Councillors, no, sorry, Lord Mayor, please turn your microphone off. Councillors, the answer, the question was heard in silence. Please allow the answer to be heard in silence. The Lord Mayor.
Thank you. This land is actually state government land. Not given to council, it is state government land. Now, technically, if the state government wants to revoke council's management of that land, and that's what's happening, we don't own the land, we're simply managing it, they can do so at any time. So what we are seeing here is a dishonest farce of a campaign from Di Farmer and now the opposition here to suggest that council somehow has to give back state-owned land. It is a joke and it is a blatant attempt to con the people of that area into voting Labour. They're manufacturing an issue that does not exist.
Councillors, please allow the answer to be heard in silence. The Lord Mayor.
Councillor Cassidy, stop trying to con the people with lies, with blatant mistruths. This is state-owned land, they can through the stroke of a pen, take it back. They can. We manage it, we don't own it. Simple, it is very, very simple. So we see here, a local Labour MP has, who has obviously not a lot to talk about in the lead-up to the election, and wants to manufacture an issue that is not real. And so, last time I checked, the local member was a minister in the government. A minister in the government should know better than to try and mislead the people of her area by suggesting that council needs to give back land that it doesn't even own. Wow, wow. Either this is a very deliberate attempt to mislead or it is a case of someone not doing their basic research. Either way, it is a problem. Either way, I would be very embarrassed and red-faced if I was either councillor Cassidy or the local Labour member Di Farmer in trying to blow up an issue that simply doesn't exist. And so if the state government wants to have the land and control of the land back, they can do so easily, stroke of a pen, no problem. We're not standing in the way of anything here, we're simply managing a land. And I can tell you, if we weren't managing that land, then maintenance responsibilities and all the other things that we're doing for that land go to the state government. So we would actually save ratepayers money by not managing that land. I'm not saying that we want to do that, but the reality is, this is a complete farce of an issue, a manufactured concocted issue which is not truthful in any way. And a little bit of basic research would show that this is state land, simply managed by council. And if the state wants to assume management of their own land, they can do so at any time. I hope I answered your question councillor.
Further questions, councillor Huang.
Point of order Chair.
Point of order councillor Cassidy.
I move suspension of standing orders to enable me to move the following urgency motion, that 2.75 hectares of land adjacent to Balmoral State High School and currently held in trust by Brisbane City Council be handed back to Education Queensland for zero dollars.
Do you have that in writing?
I do.
Could you please?
A second best.
So I have an urgency motion, hang on councillors please, I have an urgency motion from councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Strunk. Councillors, because this is the first time we've been back in the chamber, I will accept this in this manner, but in future, the system that we were using where an email can be sent to the CCLO and distributed to all councillors electronically will be the accepted means of distributing urgency motions, all right? But we will allow this at this one instance. Yeah, point of order councillor Johnston.
Yeah, just to be clear, which rule of procedure are you referring to?
The rules are silent on the manner in which urgency motions are dealt with.
Point of order.
A point of order to you, Lord Mayor.
Just seeking a clarification on whether this would be a competent motion, given that we don't actually own the land.
What I will, this is why I must insist I go out in writing in future so that all councillors can read everything clearly. But what I will say is that the practice has been, the first motion is procedural, the second motion is substantive, and Lord Mayor, I'll answer that question on substantiveness if urgency is adopted. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Chair. And the motion is very clear, and I've been very clear, this land is held in trust by the Brisbane City Council. We know it's owned by the state government, but it was transferred after Campbell Newman sought to sell this land in 2013.
Point of order, I'm really sorry, I have to-
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Yes, Mr Chairman, I draw your attention to the meeting's Local Laws 2001, which relates to the procedure at meetings, which includes how to suspend standing rules and outlines very specifically how to suspend standing rules. It's been done this way for a very long time. And yes, when there was video conferencing, there was a change. But you've just stated on the record that there are no procedures around urgency, but section 12 outlines very clearly how that's to be done.
No, 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 no.
And urgency motions-
Point of order has ended there. I understand the point you're making. Section 12 outlines these procedural matters, it does not outline the mechanism, it doesn't outline a procedure, it is silent as to procedure. That is why we, that is why this rule will be created.
Point of order, Mr Chairman, it states very specifically how it is to be done.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't state it at all, that's the issue.
Councillor proposing to suspend standing rules by way of motion must establish to the satisfaction of the council chamber, not you, the council chamber.
No, councillor Johnston, your point of order is concluded.
Appropriate reasons for dealing with the motion urgently.
No, councillor Johnston, your point of order is concluded and it is not a point of order that has not been already dealt with. Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you Chair. So this is urgent today because time is running out for term one of 2021. And that's the request that the school in Education Queensland and the state member and the community has made of the Lord Mayor. And now we are led to believe that the Lord Mayor knows nothing about these requests that have been made.
Councillor Cassidy, it's an urgency motion, so can you please address your comments as to why the matter must be dealt with urgently?
Well, it needs to be dealt with urgently by this chamber Chair, as I said, because time is running out. And the Lord Mayor has clearly demonstrated he is not willing to deal with this matter. He's claimed he knows nothing about it in what he said in his answer to the question. And why we have to deal with this as a chamber is because he is refusing. We know that this school is in desperate need for this space, for its continued growth and providing what a school needs to provide for their students. When Campbell Newman tried to sell this land, it was 460 students, now there will be 820 students.
Councillor Cassidy, I appreciate what you're saying. And we've been going for almost a minute and a half on, and we've talked about Campbell Newman, who hasn't been premier for five years. Can you please just bring your comments back to why it must be an urgency motion and not an ordinary notified motion? Councillor Cassidy.
Because we know what this administration does when you move notified motions in this place Chair, so we should just deal with this now as a chamber. The Lord Mayor can't be trusted to act in the best interests of residents around the city, he's demonstrated that time and time again. So it is incumbent on this chamber to deal with this matter Chair. This is urgent because this school community is desperate to get this land back. It was only ever a stopgap measure and a second best measure that council holds it in trust. The very best outcome for this school community and the local community is for that school and for Education Queensland to retain that land instead of council having that. Now, why is council stalling on transferring this land back to Education Queensland? We don't know, we can only assume it's for political reasons. We can only assume the Lord Mayor is acting politically when he refuses, when he refuses to sign this land back over.
Councillor Cassidy, I'm speaking. Please bring your comments back to us. Urgency, they are very clearly on matters of substance. Councillor Cassidy.
The children of Balmoral High Chair should not be made to jump through hoops to secure this land for the continued growth of their school. This Lord Mayor needs to be acting in the interests of that community and he refuses to do so. And that's why it is urgent that this council deals with this matter.
On the matter of urgency, all those in favour, please say aye. And aye, those against, please say no. The nos have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy. And councillor Strunk, please ring the bells. Councillors, please be silent while the bells are ringing. Clerks, please close the bars. Right, all those in favour of urgency, please say aye and raise your hand. And those against, thank you, those against, please say no and raise your hand. Clerks, when you're ready. Thank you councillors, when you're ready. Councillors, to explain the comments I made earlier, section 2423E discusses that and I'm seeking formal advice from the city legal council. And they'll be provided to all councillors as appropriate. And is there, however, are there any abstentions, any formal abstentions councillor? Thank you. Clerks, please read the result when you're ready. Please proceed.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, sorry, the nos have it, sorry. The voting being 17 nos, five in favour and one abstention.
The nos have it.
Point of order.
Point of order to you, Lord Mayor.
Just wanted to seek your clarification. Assume that what we've just voted on is the matter of urgency, not the substantive matter of whether the land should be transferred.
That's right.
So it would be incorrect to say that we voted against transferring the land?
That's right. So the matter that we've just voted on is whether the council should suspend standing orders to debate the motion, not the substance of the motion. That is true in all instances. All right councillors, we will now return to question time. There is, no, no councillor, please, there's no need to interject so long. Please, I appreciate some interjections can occur, but please keep them brief and on topic. There has been 12 minutes 24 seconds has elapsed inside the ordinary question time. I call councillor Huang to ask his question, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee, councillor Allen. Councillor Allen, this morning at the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee, the Greens councillor requested information on what council could do to put downward pressure on property values. Can you outline what the homeowners of Brisbane would think of this proposition from the Greens and Greens?
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you, thank you councillor Huang for the question. I must say, I was bemused by this question myself, so I'm glad that you've raised it in the chamber this afternoon. I indicated to councillor Sri at the time that forcing down property prices was not a core activity of council and not something that this administration would consider. So incredulous was I of the notion or Greens' policy that I started to reflect on this concept. Brisbane is a great place to live, work and relax. It's the envy of many cities. And because it is a desirable city, people want to live here and housing prices strengthen. So to turn to the truck crux of this question, what could council do to put downward pressure on property prices? And while this administration would not consider this, the answer is, well, it's relatively easy and it's somewhat concerning. So what could a council, perhaps a Greens' council, do to drive down property prices? Firstly, we could stop mowing and maintaining our wonderful parks and sporting fields and turn them into forests or urban farms. We could probably stop rubbish collection altogether. Say goodbye to your weekly service, we could just recycle, compost and manage our own rubbish. We know the Greens don't like motorists, so to road resurfacing, no more of that. Local roads would be in such disrepair that nobody would want to live in Brisbane, that'll drive down property prices. Green bridges add value, connectivity and amenity, so we'll have to scrap that plan. City cats and buses, we might keep skeleton services, but ultimately, even that may be advantageous to property prices, so let's halt them. Why have good public transport when you are trying to drive down property prices? They could introduce punitive new taxes and levies to target homeowners, and this has been proposed by the Greens previously. Recently, we resolved to allow, to disallow townhouse developments in low-density suburban areas. Well, with the Greens' logic, let's reverse that decision and also allow high-density high-rises in the suburbs. That's a sure way to put pressure, downward pressure on values in the mums and dads, homeowner sector. Properties around these areas would plummet in value. You see, fundamentally, the premise of putting downward pressure on the value of properties through government intervention is flawed and fraught. As one of the more than 509,000 ratepayers in Brisbane, we've worked hard to purchase a home. And homeowners work for many years to pay their mortgage while raising families, running businesses and pursuing other meaningful endeavours, to provide a home for their families and to support themselves in retirement. Is reducing the property prices of hard-working Brisbane residents a Greens' election commitment or policy? If so, I'm interested to see more about this in coming weeks. All three levels of government are supporting homeownership through measures including the Home Builders Scheme through the Morrison government, first homeowner grants and stamp duty concessions from the state. And council is supporting first homeowners through 100% rates rebate for first, for the first 12 months for those building a new home or buying off the plan. With councillor Sri's logic, a home buyer will have toiled the better part of their working lives to save a deposit, pay down a mortgage, provide for their homes. This has been the case for many generations. And then, through one foul swoop, through an egregious Greens' policy, they would diminish the value of these hard-earned assets. Eroding property values in the hope of making the market more accessible is reckless, it's irresponsible and exactly the reason the Greens cannot be trusted. This administration stands to support homeownership and a free market which is subject to standard economic forces. So if residents want to ensure the continuation of the great services this council provides and have faith in their property market, then I suggest you steer clear of the ulterior motives of the Greens' councillor and his political cohort. Only an LMP administration, an LMP state government and the Morris federal government are supportive of working hard to get ahead. When it comes to anything financial, the Greens cannot be trusted. It's simple and clear. While this administration would not consider such steps, a Greens-influenced administration might. I leave these thoughts to the ratepayers of Brisbane. Thank you.
Further questions, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Chair. My question is to councillor Allen, the Chair of the Finance and City Governance Committee. Councillor Allen, in your administration's budget, you announced a delayed rates hike for Brisbane residents. You called it a rates freeze, but really, it's not a rates freeze at all. We know that next year's residents' rates won't increase just once, but they'll increase twice. We're still yet to see the full economic impact of COVID-19 with many households already struggling with debt and unemployment. Right when the community is trying to pull itself out of recession, you have ordered a double rates hike. More concerning is the fact that you haven't revealed to the people of Brisbane how much you plan to hike their rates by in 2021. Councillor Allen, how bad is the rates hike you've got planned and you have to keep it secret from Brisbane residents?
Councillor Allen, councillor Allen?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and I thank councillor Cassidy.
Councillor Allen, could you please, sorry, could you please push your button for me and then push it again? Yep, that, that's it, yep, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you councillor Cassidy for the question, and I do find the question somewhat perplexing. I mean, what kind of an administration, particularly in a very, very volatile environment like this, would be starting to finalise the framework of a budget for the 2122 year? I mean, the ALP state government are going to a state election in two weeks' time, they haven't even got a budget. Look, now, ultimately, we take seriously the responsibility to carefully manage the finances of this city. This administration's reputation for financial management is outstanding. We will start the process of considering the 2122 budget in coming weeks, so we start early.
Point of order, Chair.
It's an extremely thorough process. But, excuse me councillor Allen, it's a point of order, point of order to you councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, thanks Chair, I think councillor Allen might have misunderstood the question. I'm referring to this financial year, the first six months of 2021. So rates are going up in January.
Okay, all right, thank you for your.
How much?
Thank you. As always, councillor Allen, please address your comments to the question at hand and take consideration to councillor Cassidy's comments, please councillor Allen.
Am I online?
You are, go on, yeah.
Okay. Look, ultimately, we are in a very volatile situation. We're continuing to monitor the financial circumstances, as you're aware. This administration has provided a rates freeze for the first six months of this financial year. We've provided further accommodations to the ratepayers of Brisbane through deferrals and a range of other initiatives. So we are very, very conscious of the challenge that people are placing, you know, in the context of where we might go in the first six months of the next calendar year, the second half of this financial year. Decisions haven't been made on that, but we do recognise that, you know, there is financial hardship out there in the, in the community, and we are continuing to take the opportunity.
Councillors, please, so councillor Allen, please, councillors, please allow councillor Allen's question to be heard in silence.
So we are continuing to take the opportunity to monitor the situation. We have a very good handle on the kind of hardship that residents are facing. We're closely monitoring rates deferrals, where people are struggling to make rates payments, and so we are conscious of this. We are looking at alternatives to, to support the ratepayers of Brisbane, but in the context of answering councillor Cassidy's question, it's premature to do that, other than to say, when we've decided on what we believe is the right way forward, we will let the chamber know. Thank you.
Further questions? Councillor Hutton.
My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, over the recess, a new news service has popped up on Facebook, spruiking the platform as 'Your News, Your Opinion and Your Voice'. Laughably, this service is actually published by the Brisbane City Council Labour team. Lord Mayor, can you outline how this platform is nothing more than promotion of inflated propaganda by the Labour Party?
Lord Mayor?
Thank you councillor Hutton. Well, 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 fake news has come to Brisbane City Council. We have our own equivalent of the Russian troll factory, the fake news factory, and it's interesting, because lefties around the world are outraged at the Russian influence in the 2016 election, yet councillor Cassidy's like, we'll have some of that, we'll do that, that's a great idea! Let's try and blatantly manipulate the people of Brisbane with political propaganda coming straight out of the Labour Party propaganda machine. It's a website and a social media presence called Brisbane Now. What it means is fake news now, Labour propaganda now, and it is, they put a lot of work into manipulating and deceiving the people of Brisbane here. They really, they tried to make it seem as though it was some kind of legitimate journalism, but I've got to say, any legitimate journalist would be ashamed at putting up that kind of propaganda that we've seen. And so, we've seen today already the way that the Labour Party here operates. The Belmoral School example was a perfect example. Forget about the facts, forget about reality, we're going to put a political spin on it. We are going to keep repeating a lie in the hope that people will believe it's true, and guess what, that's what Brisbane Now is all about. It's fake news, it's a deliberate and very deceptive attempt to mislead the people of Brisbane. They hope that some people will go onto this site believing that it's some kind of legitimate news service, when it is Labour Party propaganda. Labour councillors behind this should hang their heads in shame at the very deceptive attempt to mislead the people of Brisbane. I remember during the council election, the Labour councils were very outraged, they put up a post at one time saying, scam alert! Well, guess what? Scam alert, Brisbane Now is a scam, Brisbane Now is political propaganda from the Labour Party, and they should hang their heads in shame at these attempts, these attempts to con the people of Brisbane. Unfortunately, we ran in the last campaign with a very positive agenda, but on the other side, our warning to the people of Brisbane is, don't get conned by Patrick Condon and Labour. Now, Patrick is out of the picture now, but they're still trying to con the people of Brisbane with this kind of thing. And it is really shameful, and we'll shine the light on you councillor Cassidy and your shady backroom people who are producing this propaganda, and the people of Brisbane will see what you're really trying to do.
Further questions? Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairperson. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, you may not remember, but in the last sitting session of this, last sitting session, Labour brought to your attention the shocking number of bus driver assaults that have, that have been happening. Since then, we've received results for August and September, and those figures show that they are far too high. In August, there were sixty assaults on our bus drivers, and in September, there were fifty assaults. And unfortunately, these are similar to the numbers last year, but that is despite the fact that COVID meant that there was reduced patronage. Lord Mayor, we believe, Labour believes, that every staff member, every bus driver deserves the right to work and the right to return home at the end of each day safely and without injury. Lord Mayor, why won't you act to address the high number of assaults on our bus drivers and our staff?
To Lord Mayor.
Well councillor Griffiths?
Lord Mayor, can you, yep, there you go, please go.
Through you, Mr Chair, you may not remember that this issue has been raised again and again and again, and the response is always the same. Council has done absolutely everything, everything possible to hold up our end of the bargain, to keep our employees safe, and we will continue to do so. We are the leader in the field when it comes to operating public transport services. There is no bus company in Queensland that does more to support its drivers than us. And I challenge you, through you, Mr Chair, councillor Griffiths, to find another bus company that, that does more. We are passionate about the service that our bus operators provide, and we are passionate about doing everything possible to protect them, but there is more that can be done at other levels of government, and we have been quite open in asking for those things to happen. They are things like further tightening of the laws for people that assault bus drivers, because at the moment, it is sad to see that many people who assault bus drivers get nothing more than a slap on the wrist. And this is unacceptable, this is completely unacceptable. So what deterrent is there for people to do the wrong thing when they can just get away with it? And the court process takes so long that it could be months or even years later that these matters are actually heard in court, and then nothing comes out of it of substance. So some tightening of the law would be appropriate, some protection for bus operators would be appropriate, and we've called for some mandatory sentencing to be introduced in the past on these sort of assaults. In the same way that there is a, I understand, mandatory sentence in place for people that assault emergency service workers. So these, these people that go out there and provide a critical service like police, fire and ambulance, if you assault them, you're in serious trouble. The law says you are in serious trouble, yet for some reason, the state government does not believe bus drivers warrant particularly the same, particularly the same protection. And so that is an issue that needs to be addressed. In the end, the courts uphold the law, but the government of the day has the ability to change that law, and that is what we have suggested repeatedly, and that is what has been rejected by this state government. I don't believe that the same problem would exist if there was an LMP state government. The LMP state government takes a very dim approach, and has done in the past, of people that do this sort of thing. They should have the book thrown at them. And the second thing that is really important, which could really help, is to put more senior network officers on the beat, effectively, on the network. Now, the union, the RTBU union that represents some bus drivers, definitely not all bus drivers, but some bus drivers, has backed us up on this. They've called for fifty extra senior network officers. These are people who are translink officers that have the protection which we are calling for bus drivers to have, and they do a range of things, including providing a security presence, but they can also do things like revenue protection, i.e. people that aren't paying their fares. And so you would think that the government would be motivated to put more of these officers on, who not only protect bus drivers and staff, but protect their fare revenue. But no, we haven't, we've repeatedly asked for more senior network officers, and the union believes fifty extra officers are required, and I think the most we've ever seen out of this state government is an extra sixteen, and that's not enough. So we need more presence and security, and that sixteen is right across South East Queensland, it's not even just in Brisbane. So there are things that state government can be doing to improve this situation. We will continue working to do what we can to support our bus operators, who do a fantastic job, and to be the leader when it comes to a bus company in this region, in the state, providing the best level of service and protection for our drivers. We are proud of that record and we continue to focus on it, but we can't do everything ourselves, we need some state laws to change, and we also need additional security presence from those state officers. It's a very reasonable request that we've made repeatedly, it's a reasonable request that's been called for from the union as well, and it baffles me as to why the state government is not agreeing to this union request. They agree to every other union request, yet somehow not this. It is quite baffling, and I would hope that this approach will change going forward.
Further questions? Councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Public and Active Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, our bus drivers are essential partners with council in delivering a public transport service our city knows and loves. Their safety is paramount. I have asked in this chamber for consideration by the state government of implementation of laws in the past for people who throw projectiles at our public transport vehicles. Can you give councillor Murphy an update to the chamber on what the Shriner administration is doing to ensure our bus drivers are safe in their workplace and any other developments in this area over the recess, please?
Councillor Murphy?
Thank you very much, Chair, and I thank councillor Owen for the question, and I could hear the passion in your voice then councillor Owen, because I know just how deeply personal the issue of bus driver safety is for you. All of us in this chamber were absolutely inspired by your actions in the aftermath of the tragic passing of Manmeet Sharma, and I believe we're approaching an anniversary of his death very shortly. I hope that no other community in Brisbane ever has to witness... I'm sorry? Did you have an interjection?
No, councillor Murphy, please continue.
I hope that no other community in Brisbane ever has to witness, councillor Owen, what your community did ever again. Mr Chair, on that note, we know that...
No, please don't eject councillor Murphy.
We know that safety for every member of council's transport for Brisbane team is absolutely paramount, both those driving our buses, as well as our employees working at the depots and in the garages. For years, this Lord Mayor, as the former Public and Active Transport Chair, has been calling on the state government to step up and help protect our frontline bus operators and the vital work that they do for our city, and we heard some of his comments just then about his frustration in not being able to get cooperation from the state government. Now, the Lord Mayor has written letter after letter to the Premier, Anastasia Palache, and the Deputy Premier and then Transport Minister Jackie Trad, and of course, the current Transport Minister, Mark Bailey, calling on them to create a separate higher offence for assaulting a bus driver, in line with the assault provision for emergency personnel. We've heard precious little, but hopefully that is about to change. Finally, we now have an independent body saying the same thing as the Lord Mayor, recommending that the state government take charge to amend their legislation to include bus operators as a frontline worker, and I want to thank the sentencing council for doing that. Now, the report of the sentencing council takes into account the 2017 Bus Drivers Safety Review, which was conducted by the Department of Transport and Main Roads, and recommends that the criminal code be amended to recognise bus operators as public officers. By amending the criminal code, bus drivers will receive legal protection similar to emergency workers. The sentencing council's recognition of bus operators as public officers also acknowledges the important role that they provide in providing a service to the travelling public. The sentencing council board is made up of legal professionals and victim advocates. These highly respected council members have recommended that frontline officers such as bus operators need greater protection, and the recommendation will be welcome to our drivers, to the union, and I'm sure to all councillors in this chamber. Brisbane City Council, as you know, Chair, is one of the largest bus operators in the country and the city's major provider of public transport. We employ more than 2,200 bus operators across a fleet of more than 1,000 vehicles servicing over 6,000 bus stops, so it is an extensive fleet. Our bus operators are our ambassadors out on the roads for council, delivering a very important public service, with more than 3.1 million services in the last financial year, carrying more than 61 million passengers each and every year. We are absolutely committed to our staff and their wellbeing, and we stand by our commitment to safety, and as the Lord Mayor said, council has a range of measures to ensure the protection of our drivers and our bus team, including through the Network Coordination Centre, which is staffed whenever there's a T4B bus on the road. In June this year, we completed the installation of 1,234 bus driver safety barriers. We have CCTV on 100% of our bus fleet, as well as shatterproof glass, emergency buttons and duress alarms fitted to each bus, along with a silent alarm as well. All of our T4B buses have a radio connected to the Network Coordination Centre, as well as being fitted with a GPS tracking unit. There are 25 Nightlink Guards on buses, six Nightlink bus interchanges and bus stop guards, all up, totaling 54 guards as well as seven rapid response vehicles. But it is the state government, senior network officers, the SNOS, who have the power to issue fines, detain an offender and to take people's details. And last year, we implored the state government to introduce, as the Lord Mayor said, the 50 SNOS that will make our bus network safer, and to date, we've seen only 16 introduced. So SNOS are the people that we need, and we need the state to deliver these SNOS. So we will, we will continue to call on the state to provide these officers, and councillor Griffiths, you may wish to join with the Lord Mayor and with the council in doing just that. Now, Labour often call for us to do more, as they have done today, but clearly, we've done a lot, all we need now is the state government to step up to the plate.
Are there any further questions? Councillor Sri? Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, your colleagues in the state LMP party have not committed to any increase in funding for public housing, and in fact have been largely silent on the question of homelessness. Yet your own administration has also opposed putting any more council funding into public or community housing, and is also opposed to policy levers and mechanisms to put downward pressure on housing values in the private sector. So what advice do you have for your LMP colleagues in the state government about their lack of support for investment in public housing, and how do you propose that the LMP in this state and in this city should act to address rising homelessness and housing insecurity?
To the Lord Mayor.
So, first I would say, Mr Chair, that the premise of the question is incorrect. First of all, this council has increased its support for our response to homelessness in recent times, and in fact, since I have been Lord Mayor.
And in fact, since I have been Lord Mayor, we introduced a new $3 million Pathways Out of Homelessness Programme and a grant programme supporting local community organisations that are at the forefront of responding to homelessness. And there's been a great response to that and some great outcomes delivered already. And we will continue to do our part in making sure we help those organisations. Now, Brisbane City Council, unlike the state government, is not involved in building public housing. Now, there are councils in the UK and America where they call them council flats, and the council is actually building public housing. This is not something that has ever been Brisbane City Council's realm, but something that the state government has always been responsible for. Now, we do have ownership, joint ownership, of the Brisbane Housing Company. And I'm very proud of our ownership of that company because that company has provided hundreds and thousands of units of affordable housing for the people of Brisbane. And that company is actually putting the state government to shame when it comes to providing great outcomes. We know that the public housing waiting list is around 34,000 people across the state, last time I heard. And we know that the state government only has plans to provide around 6,000 new homes. So there is an issue here. But councillor Sri was asking through you, Mr Chair, for advice on what I would recommend. Well, I have a couple of recommendations when it comes to housing affordability, homelessness and the provision of public or social housing. The first thing is that councillor Sri and his approach to the development of new homes is going to be a concern for the provision of public housing or affordable housing. Because councillor Sri has consistently...
Point of order, Chair.
A point of order to you, councillor Sri.
Unrelevance. My question was not what advice did the mayor have for me, but what advice did the mayor have for the LNP and the state level party?
I think that, no, I think that the Lord Mayor was answering the question that...
I will provide some general advice if that helps.
And that the advice to you would also be valid to them, yeah, Lord Mayor.
So there's a range of factors going on here when it comes to affordability and the provision of new housing and social housing. And one of those issues is supply. And there are few councillors in the city of Brisbane who are more active in opposing development than councillor Sri. This has an effect on supply. This helps drive up housing prices, and this helps drive down affordability. So if you keep opposing every development that happens, then you'll have a supply issue pretty quickly. So that's one thing that you probably shouldn't do if you're interested in housing affordability. Opposing every development is probably not productive in increasing supply and improving affordability. Now, secondly, there's a key issue here where a lot of people make the claim that we should have a say about every development that happens in a particular area. And councillor Sri appears to subscribe to that approach. But that approach doesn't appear to extend to social housing and public housing. It is quite clear that in order to build the number of homes that the Greens political parties say that they want to build, no one will have a say in where that housing goes, because you simply won't be able to build it otherwise. So in a new world where the Greens either hold the balance of power or have any kind of real decision-making process involvement, you can expect no say as a community on the provision of new public or social housing, because there is no other way to boost supply in the way that it needs to be boosted. To get those 34,000 people off the waiting list, that's a lot of housing that needs to be built in a lot of areas. And I can predict that the Greens will give nobody a say in where that goes and how it's built. So that's another issue that is relevant here. But ultimately, to boost up the provision of public housing, we need a state government that is serious about this issue and prepared to invest. I do personally believe that one potential way of helping to deal with this issue, it meshes quite well with the discussions that have been had on the potential Olympic bid for 2032, to build an Olympic village.
Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Further questions? councillor Davis?
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the City Planning and Economic Development Committee, councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, today the Lord Mayor opened the Brisbane Business Hub as an outcome of the Economic Recovery Task Force. Can you outline how this hub will support Brisbane businesses get back on their feet following the COVID pandemic?
Councillor Adams?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Earlier this year, the Economic Recovery Task Force launched the Business in Brisbane Economic Recovery...
Please, councillors, allow the answer to be heard in silence.
Survey, thank you. We reached out to over 15,000 local businesses to better understand how we could support them and how they were impacted through these difficult times. It became abundantly clear from the survey that businesses needed help sourcing advice and finding opportunities and assistance available to them. And that is what the Business Hub has been designed with in mind. Yes, the capital was there for the last few years and did a wonderful job at supporting our startups and our scale-ups. And those opportunities still exist in the Business Hub. But this is now ground zero for the recovery effort. It is the hub. We will have spokes. We will be going out to the community and connecting through suburban networks as well, where you will be able to come and get that assistance. A one-stop shop offering a range of practical support tools and resources to guide the business community through the challenges ahead and ensure they are in a strong position to thrive in a post-pandemic world. It will cater for all businesses, small, medium or large. It can be a face-to-face or it can be a virtual, online, 24/7 experience. We're there to make sure that we can supply everything that they need. There's a range of industry experts, there's commercial partners, government agencies. There'll be workshops, individual mentoring sessions on everything from managing cash flow to branding, legal advice and customer growth. Small business, we know, is the backbone of our economy, and this space will give residents a unique opportunity to network with experienced business figures who are willing to help our business community get back on their feet. And can I say, we have seen nothing like it since the Mud Army 10 years ago with the businesses that have come online at the Business Hub to give us their pro bono support for their work, whether it be in any of those specialties that I mentioned before. This is going to be a fantastic, affordable, flexible and accessible space for people to do business or shift their business model to make sure that Brisbane comes out strong on the other side of this pandemic crisis.
That concludes question time. Councillors, I draw your attention to the next item on the agenda, the consideration of recommendations of the Establishment Coordination Committee during the recess. The Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the recommendations of the Establishment and Coordination Committee during the spring recess 2020 on matters usually considered by that committee be adopted.
Seconded...
It's been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the deputy mayor, that the report of the recommendations of the Establishment Coordination Committee during the spring recess of 2020 on matters usually considered by that committee be adopted. Is there any debate? the Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I just, before I moved on, wanted to touch on an issue that came up in question time about Balmoral State High School, which is really quite extraordinary, given the information that's floating around there and information that is quite easy to obtain. But also advice as well that I have handy from our legal advisers in council about this matter. So as I made it clear, this land is managed in trust by council. We don't own the land, it is state land. It was granted in trust to us to manage, and it is being provided as public green space, effectively. So available to anyone in the community as green space. Now, what is being proposed here is not to simply create some playing fields or play space for the kids in the school or for the students in the school, but they actually want to provide some additional, and I quote, building platform for the school, together with some play space. So they want to build on this. And so what they want to do is have land that is currently being used by the community as public open space and green space. And they want to build some buildings on it, some infrastructure. And they want to make sure that it's available only to the students in that school and not necessarily to the wider community. So that is what is being proposed here. That is what the petition from the local state member is proposing. But when you actually have a look at the advice from City Legal, I can confirm here from the chief legal counsel that there is no requirement for the minister to seek council's consent or approval to take back the management of that trust land. No requirement. So this idea that we have to somehow sign off on it, and Lord Mayor, why won't you sign off on it? Why are you ignoring community consent? They don't even have to ask us. They don't even have to ask us. The minister can, as I said, with the stroke of a pen, take back management of this land immediately. This is a trumped-up dishonest campaign by the Labour Party to con the people of Brisbane. And it's like their fake news website. It is about conning the people of Brisbane, conning the people of Balmoral and conning people in the lead-up to the state election. It is not enough for them to actually use facts to mount a political argument. They just make stuff up. They completely manufacture them. And so it really, really, this question time has illustrated, unfortunately, some really sorry things about how the opposition works. And we've seen time and time again as well. They will move an urgency motion. And what people are voting on in this chamber is whether the motion is urgent or not, not whether we voted against the substantive matter or for the substantive matter. Yet time and time again, they go out on social media and say, "The LNP voted against transferring the land" or "The LNP voted against this." That is dishonest. That is misleading. That is fake news. That is fake news. The party of fake news, it's the Labour Party.
Councillors, councillors, that's enough. Lord Mayor.
And then they suggest that we don't want to talk about this issue. Well, I've spent a lot of time talking about this issue so far in this meeting, and I'm happy to continue talking about this issue. I simply want to get the facts out there. And what Labour wants to do is continue to perpetuate the mistruths that they think will win a few votes in the local community. So let's shine the light on the facts here, which is if the state government wants the land back, they don't need our approval, they can take it at any time. Why didn't they do that before caretaker period ended? Oh, I wonder. Maybe they wanted to use this as a political issue in the lead-up to the election. I don't know, but it's really cynical. This approach from Labour is really cynical and very disappointing. But sadly not surprising. I wanted to move on to some other things. And before I address the reports in front of us and the submissions in front of us, I wanted to talk, as I usually do, about some of the great community events and causes that we're supporting in the coming days. First of all, tonight, the Story Bridge and Reddick Cliff Place sculptures will be lit pink to support the return of the Big Sound Festival, councillor Howard. It's back again in 2020 with a revised programme of conference, live music, parties, secret shows, ensuring that its longstanding role of supporting our great live music and entertainment industry continues, even despite these challenging times. This is the time we need to keep these great events going. And while it is different to previous years, it's going ahead and we support it, and we're showing our support in various ways, including lighting up the Story Bridge and Reddick Cliff Place sculptures. On Wednesday night, so tomorrow, the Victoria Bridge and Story Bridges will be lit purple to support Darkness to Daylight. Darkness to Daylight is a 110-kilometre overnight running event held by the organisation Australia's CEO. They are aiming to help raise awareness of domestic and family violence to bring corporate, government and community together behind this important issue. And once again, we support their great efforts. This week also marks National SES Week. And as we go into storm season again this summer, and as we know, we're facing a potential La Nina year, which means more rainfall, storms and potential flooding, we really appreciate the work that the State Emergency Service continues to do to support our city and its residents in their time of need. We have great SES workers and volunteers in our city. We are actively supporting them through a range of council projects and funding, through support for equipment and depots, and even payments directly to the SES volunteers as well. And so City Hall will be lit orange tomorrow night in support of our fantastic SES workers and volunteers. I did want to mention as well the LGAQ's support for the Local Government Walk Against Violence. This is a statewide initiative, raising awareness against domestic and family violence. And also it involves what they know as a red bench relay. People would be aware the Red Rose Foundation is very active in this field, and there are red benches in many places around the city, supported by local councillors to install those red benches. They're all about raising awareness of this scourge in our society. The LGAQ is asking councillors to consider organising effectively a walk to or from the red bench, a walk of between 1 and 5 kilometres, just to raise awareness in the local area around that red bench that you have installed. And so we'd certainly support and encourage councillors to have a think about how they can do that. You can organise those events anytime between the 25th of November and the 10th of December. So you've got a little bit of time to get it organised. And certainly it's something that we would encourage as many councils as possible to get involved with. In recent weeks as well, we've had a number of events gearing up. And it does seem that with all the event cancellations and festival cancellations and all of the things that couldn't happen earlier this year, everyone is now getting activated to try and cram as much as possible into the end of this year. So the next few months, I know, will be incredibly busy for all of us. And it's great to see. It's great to see events that may have otherwise been cancelled going ahead. It's great to see activity returning because we sure do need it. One of the things that did go ahead is the Brisbane Portrait Prize, which is proudly supported by Brisbane City Council and also the powerhouse. And this is the second year that the Brisbane Portrait Prize has been held. We have such incredible talent in our local community, so many incredibly talented artists. And to have a portrait prize only in its second year, but to have such a high standard of entries. There were between 600 and 700 entries into the Brisbane Portrait Prize this year. And we had a fantastic result. And once again, the talent is second to none. It is world-class and something that we should encourage. And like I said, with the support for the live music industry and entertainment industry, our artists are really needing support and recognition and acknowledgement now. And the Brisbane Portrait Prize is one of many ways that we can support that industry and showcase the incredible talent that we have here. So thank you in particular to councillor Vicky Howard and to the many people, Anna Reynolds, involved with making the Portrait Prize a possibility and a reality, and also all the corporate sponsors as well.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Move for an extension? Second?
I have an extension of time moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Landers. All those in favour, please say aye. Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor, 10 minutes.
We also...
And just turn that back on, please.
Okay, thank you, Mr Chair. We also recently celebrated and commemorated Reserve Forces Day here in City Hall. And our reserve forces are such critical members of our local community. Across our community, we have some of the biggest military bases in Australia, here in South East Queensland. We have the Gallipoli Barracks out at Inogra. We have RAF Base Ambley, which is the biggest air force base in Australia on our doorstep. We have this large contingent of serving and former-serving military personnel here. And a big part of that are the reserve forces. And they are people who Winston Churchill rightly said are twice the citizen because they contribute to a normal day job and they also, in their spare time, volunteer to serve our country. And that service to our country is not only required in times of conflict, but in times of natural disaster as well. And so this year, it was particularly relevant that we acknowledge our reserve forces because at the beginning of the year, many of our reservists were actively fighting bushfires right across the country and providing support to communities in need. And in more recent times, they've been at the forefront of the COVID response. Many people do not know that the quarantine hotels are being run, in many cases, by our reservists. And so they're out there providing that service to make sure that the quarantine... And so they're out there providing that service to make sure that the quarantine is working properly. And that's a critical part in keeping us all safe during COVID. So thank you again to all of our reservists, current and former, and we thank you for your service to our country. Item A in the report is the Contracts and Tendering Report that comes through each month. Worth noting in this particular submission is the work that's being done to gear up the North West business case. And this is a key commitment of our council to make sure we lead the charge when it comes to planning the future transport needs of the North West Corridor. A corridor which has been neglected by the state government for too long, and a corridor which we are now leading the charge on planning. And that, I just want to place on the record, is an all modes study that we're doing. So this is not, as Labor would say, about building a toll road in the Ridiculous Scare campaign. This is about working out what the best way is to build infrastructure to meet the transport needs of the North West suburbs and the surrounding communities. And so we have a very open mind about what that might involve. It might involve improved public transport, it might involve bikeways and active travel. There's a whole range of things that could come out of this, but we want to have a good look and lead the charge because anyone that lives in the northwestern suburb of Brisbane knows that that area has been under invested in by successive state governments. And despite the fact that there's been a plan on the book to do something about it for more than 50 years, nothing has happened and the traffic is getting worse and worse and worse. And we want to lead the charge in planning for the future to make sure that infrastructure can be invested in by different levels of government, including council, state and federal, and also the private sector if necessary, to help meet those challenges. So we are obviously progressing that work and it's very exciting, and we look forward to seeing some of the outcomes of that. There's also some contract management services for the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge listed here. And so we've got E3 Advisory doing that work for us to help us manage the tender process, to gear up, to appoint tenders, to help design and construct the first of our new green bridges. And that is a really exciting project and there's been a high level of interest in that. We've got some work happening on Victoria Road, sorry, Victoria Street and Montague Road intersection upgrade, which is listed there. The Kangaroo Gully Project as well, which I know at least one particular councillor is very excited about, and a range of other contracts that have come through. Moving forward, item B relates to contracting plan regarding on-street parking payment systems. And as the submission highlights, our parking meter infrastructure is, in the coming years, due for upgrading or replacement. But based on a current assessment of our needs and the way forward, it's been decided that the best way and best value for rate pays going forward is to do a bit of upgrade to the existing infrastructure, to get an extended life of around five years, and then take advantage of new technological options that might be available after that period. So we essentially are making sure that the existing infrastructure is maintained and continued for an additional period of up to five years, and making sure that we go forward in a way that takes advantage of new technology when that infrastructure is replaced. The final submission, item C, in this particular part of the agenda, is what I call the Matic Local Law Amendment. This is a change to the way that council assesses applications for billboards, including digital billboards. This is something that was advocated for and championed by councillor Peter Matic. And I'm sorry that he can't be here today to actually talk on this item, but I know he is very excited and passionate about this change. So we have a new set of provisions which help protect and preserve the character of local areas by making sure that billboards cannot be built within a certain distance of character or heritage buildings, that billboards cannot be attached to character or heritage buildings out in the suburbs. And it's about balancing the need to protect the heritage and character of our suburbs with the big demand for local businesses to advertise their services to residents. Now, we know that that demand will continue to increase, and we know that digital advertising provides businesses the opportunity to get more cost effective advertising as well. They may not be able to afford to get a single traditional billboard for an entire month, but they can buy part of a rotating digital billboard ad at a more affordable rate. And it's all about local businesses advertising their services to support local jobs. So there's definitely an important role for the outdoor advertising industry, and we need to get that balance right between allowing local businesses to advertise their services to residents and protecting the lifestyle amenity and character of local areas. So I believe these changes will help do that, and I commend them to the chamber.
Excuse me, further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. Just at the outset, I just asked that item A be taken seriously, item for voting purposes, please.
Item A for voting.
Thank you. Starting on clause A, Contracts and Tendering Report for August 2020, Chair, it's the same story every time we get an update on contracts in this chamber. Work that should be done in-house that simply is not, and that's the moniker of this LMP administration. In this report, we see landscape maintenance services being contracted out and bus maintenance services being contracted out. There are contracts that last for years worth of ongoing work being contracted out. Jobs like these, it should be done by council employees in-house, Chair. Very concerning is the contract, number four contract listed here, for transaction and contract management services for the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge. This LMP administration, Chair, is literally contracting someone to manage a contract. We'll also need council officers to manage a contract of contract managers. This is contract seption, Chair. Sure, specialist building, bridge building is something that the private sector will have to do in this case, but managing this should be something done by council's own contract management team, not contracting out the management of a contract to a contractor, Chair. It's a prime example of how poorly the LMP operate this council. By contracting out this work, we're wasting more rate pays dollars on a contract management, taking more risks that the job won't be done properly, or to a certain standard, not supporting job security at a time when workers need it most. We're in the middle of an economic crisis as the public sector, we should be steering the workforce ship away from labour hire and casualisation, not towards it. We need solid jobs with safe incomes, Chair. This will not only benefit the worker directly, but also Brisbane families and local economies as well. If people have safe jobs, they are more likely to spend their money and boost the economy, Chair, because we know that, well, they know that next week another pay cheque is coming their way. They aren't living their life in fear of losing their job and saving every penny for a rainy day. So there is no place for excessive contracting out in Brisbane at a time like this. And this is more evidence of this Lord Mayor's lazy and business as usual approach in the worst recession this country has seen in 100 years. We need more in-house jobs for ongoing work. If you look at items two and three, Chair, these contracts for the North West Corridor, Lord Mayor mentioned, we know that the federal government has put money towards this one, and we don't know what council's plans are for this corridor. Interestingly, in an article that was put up today, Tim Mandar, the deputy leader of the LMP at a state level, said that there was no federal money put towards this project, and there is no funding for this corridor, and there are no plans to progress it. And that's what the deputy leader of the LMP said today, Chair. But we do know that this Lord Mayor and this administration is pursuing something in the North West Transport Corridor. And this Lord Mayor does need to come clean. Will it be a four lane highway, Lord Mayor, through you, Chair? Will it be a toll road? The residents who will be directly impacted by this infrastructure do have a right to know the answers to these questions. More locally for me, Chair, a contract that seemed a little odd was number seven, which is the removal of the old Sangate Road Bridge between Boondle and Virginia. Council in all of the shortlisted tenders, including the successful one, has built in additional costs for delays claimable by the contractor. So how can you plan delays and adjust prices to reflect something that hasn't started yet if you were setting the terms? I mean, this is very, very poor contract management. Clause B, the Stores Board submission for on-street parking system and infrastructure solution, Chair, another week goes by in this place and another tender is cancelled. That was basic maintenance on the Story Bridge last time. Now it's the operation of council's paid parking system. Extremely poor planning and poor processes. This Lord Mayor is setting no strategic direction. He has, I think in his own mind, he's some sort of casual observer when it comes to tenders like this one. This is more evidence, Chair, that in the face of the biggest opportunity to change the way we do business here in council, this Lord Mayor is firmly committed to business as usual. And finally, clause C, the Proposed Advertisements Interim Local Law 2020, Chair, this proposed law change is, I think the Lord Mayor almost got it right in how he described it, but it is the save councillor Matic's skin amendment and nothing more than that. Now, for years, Chair, and you've been part of this administration, you have let big disruptive, eye sawing billboards pop up across town, ruining Brisbane's character and privatising our suburbs. The last thing residents want to see is three or four flashing displays in their faces while they're trying to go for their morning or afternoon walk or drive to or from work. Councillor Matic soon found out that when Paddington residents rightly protested about ugly billboards on their streets. Electronic billboards have been popping up across the city, Chair, you know all about this, and everyone on that side knows about it. And residents have been angry about them, but it's only when an LMP councillor is under fire when this Lord Mayor will do something about it. Now, answers to questions on notice that came through today, Chair, detail how much this administration knew about this problem before they were forced, before they were dragged, kicking and screaming to do something about it. In the 1516 financial year, there were seven billboards approved. The following year, there were 13. These are all electronic billboards, by the way, Chair. In the 1718 financial year, 24 were approved, and then 36 the following year, and then another 25 up until June 30, 2020. That's 105 of these high impact, bright LED billboards. And all of a sudden, this administration says only now that they realise it was a problem. Councillor Matic said in public statements he had no idea that billboards were being approved in this city, only that he was part of an administration and part of a civic cabinet that approved the approval process for these billboards. So he knew full well, and it says in the papers before us in black and white, that council can't regulate these billboards by their own design and did nothing about it until there was political pressure applied to them. And this local law proposal, this interim local law, Chair, is a bare minimum response. It saves councillor Matic's bacon, locally, but that's about it. What about all the other residents around Brisbane who have to buy blockout curtains because an electronic billboard shines through their windows at night? Or others that are still an eyesore, but not near a heritage or character building, Chair? This is the classic LMP blueprint, only act if it saves face in a marginal ward. We know there's a great example of that just recently over at Mount Cravat East, when council purchased those three blocks supposedly for bushland and totally misused that fund, Chair.
Do you know, just bring it back to relevance, please, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. I was just making a comparison and drawing some conclusions about the way in which this administration operates when political pressure from local residents is applied to them in marginal wards. So, Chair, what we're seeing here today is the proposed make councillor Matic look better local law changes. But tighter regulations were in force and in place when Labor last introduced an advertisements local law. And when the LMP took over and they warded that down, they allowed this to happen. And they're taking the bare minimum approach. And instead of listening to residents right around the city, they are once again being dragged, kicking and screaming to do a very, very basic approach, which doesn't really scrap the surface of the conversation we need to have about how our city looks and operates, Chair. Under the LMP's watch, suburbs right around Brisbane will be turned into Times Square, except for a very narrow set of suburbs under this amendment.
Further speakers? Anyone? Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on item A, Contracts and Tendering, and I'll cover off first on contract 10, the eBus trial. So this is a contract awarded to Yutong for the electric bus trial of the City Loop. Mr Chair, we know that Brisbane's current bus contract will end in 2022, and now is the time for Brisbane to start testing the waters for the transition to vehicles with a smaller carbon footprint. And this new contract for an electric bus trial will continue our commitment to a cleaner and greener public transport fleet. So this trial was an initiative that was announced by the Lord Mayor in the 2021 budget. Our commitment is about setting a new standard for user experience on our buses. Now, Brisbane is seen around the country as a major leader in public transport service provision, and we want to keep that up. We know that the Lord Mayor announced last year that the Brisbane Metro project will be powered by a fleet of state of the art, fully electric vehicles. Some of the benefits of electric vehicles include zero tailpipe emissions, reduced operational noise, potential lower whole of life operating costs as compared to diesel buses. We will also have the ability or the potential to use green power to charge the vehicles, resulting in bus providers here in Queensland will be able to provide carbon neutral services to members of the public. It goes without saying that this is really important when we consider whether an electric bus makes sense environmentally. We look at whole of lifecycle cost, including the materials and the supply chain, supportability, spares and replacements, and of course, the ongoing maintenance and replacement cost of the vehicle. Now, Transport for Brisbane have some incredibly talented people in this strategic procurement space, and they are gearing up to make sure that this eBus trial not only provides a novel service for Brisbane rate pays on the City Loop, but that it's also a valuable learning opportunity for Brisbane City Council. Currently, council runs the free City Loop service in the Brisbane CBD using three dedicated diesel buses and one diesel electric hybrid bus. Each bus travels approximately 130 kilometres per day, so it's a route that has a high degree of reliability in terms of its distance and the route that it goes on. In addition, as a short run, it's also the most appropriate to test an electric bus on. This trial means that the Shrinra administration will establish the City Loop service as Brisbane's first fully electric dedicated bus service, which is a great achievement for our city. While we can all agree Brisbane's weather is fantastic, we have to agree that its weather can be unpredictable, humid and hot. And as I mentioned, the outcome of the trial will be used to direct future procurement strategies to determine whether introducing electric bus services across the Greater Bus Network is feasible, and we're using the City Loop as a testbed for that. So we want to see if the eBus can stand the test of the Brisbane climate. Can it put up with the air conditioning requirements we need? Not just the hot days, but the humidity, and then the frequent storms and showers that come right afterwards. How is the ride quality? Do drivers require any additional training to manage an electric bus versus a diesel bus? Are there any issues with pedestrians being aware of the buses approaching, given they are quieter? But I can assure you, with the air conditioners running, they won't be that much quieter. Now, will this manufacturer, I should say, sorry, Chair, that this manufacturer, Yutong, did meet our specifications, but we will absolutely, to borrow a phrase from my colleague, councillor Marks, ground truth every aspect of this bus's performance here in Brisbane conditions. And we will make sure that any electric bus that this council procures can stand the test of Queensland conditions before we put it into service across the fleet. The initial term of this contract is for one year, and the trial period is with an option to extend for an additional one year period to complete the trial. Now, subject to successful trial, options are available to extend up to a maximum term of five years to purchase additional electric buses to be deployed across the bus network. The tender process found that there are, at the moment, no Australian built electric buses that in operation that would service our requirements, and therefore we've had to source an electric bus from outside Australia. However, officers have looked at companies that have a presence within Queensland, and we believe this is a very fast moving space, and we will certainly be watching for local procurement options. Part of the evaluation of this contract considered the ability of a tenderer to offer local technical support, spare part distribution, and other local initiatives such as partnering with TAFE for an e-vehicle electrician qualification. Yutong was able to demonstrate that a Queensland presence, although their office is in Cairns, it does maintain a presence here in Brisbane. Training, support and maintenance services will be provided by Brisbane-based subcontractors. Training, support and maintenance services will be provided by Brisbane-based subcontractors, and Yutong will open a new dealership in Brisbane at Virginia, which will support local jobs. The decision to select a fleet of clean, green, battery-powered electric vehicles will come before we know it, and we've seen battery technology advance in leaps and bounds in recent years. This ebus trial takes council forwards in its first steps towards a cleaner, greener fleet that will provide a better experience for our customers and leave a better planet for future generations. And just quickly, Chair, on contract for transaction managers. So this transaction advisory service is to develop the commercial principles of the contract and to understand the risks associated with procurement and evaluation criteria for the tender. It's also for preparation of the tender documentation in conjunction with council's technical advisers, our project team and importantly, our probity advisers. It will provide for provision of transaction advice during what is an interactive tender process, including the involvement in the evaluation of bids and the selection of the preferred tenderer, including preparation of the evaluation report, as well as initial contract commencement activities. And look, just to some of councillor Cassidy's comments, we know that councillor Cassidy comes in here and sells himself as the ducks of economics, the economics vanguard here in council. So I was really surprised to hear that he didn't know what a transaction adviser was. This was sort of news to him, that council goes out there and gets transaction advisers. Well, I would just ask councillor Cassidy, well, how often do you buy a bridge? How often do you buy a tunnel? How often do you buy an airport? These aren't people that we have just on the panel in council that just sort of sit around and, you know, we say, oh, we're not looking, think about buying a tunnel this year, but look, why don't you just stay on? Stay on, and, you know, if we want to build a tunnel, you know, it's maybe coming up pretty soon, so. Look, I would just say to councillor Cassidy that not having a transaction adviser is probably what led to the Andrews Labor Government having to pay $1.4 billion to their contractor when they cancelled the East West Link. $1.4 billion that Labor Government spent to not build an infrastructure project because they didn't have the advice before the Premier went out there and cancelled an infrastructure project against the principles of the contract. I would say that that is the reason why the former Labor State Government, when they were in their asset-selling spree, before they got turfed out of office in 2012, sold the Queensland Port for cents in the dollar to private equity, who now run it and laugh all the way to the bank. That is the reason we have transaction advisers, councillor Cassidy. It's not so we can have contractors on top of contractors, it's to protect the position of the ratepayers of this city to make sure that the infrastructure that we deliver, this beautiful new Kangaroo Point Green Bridge, will be valued for money and that we will ensure that the best contractor is selected as part of that process. So councillor Cassidy, this is an administration that has delivered $7 billion worth of infrastructure for our city in the last decade. We have the runs on the board when it comes to delivering major infrastructure, and we won't be lectured to by the Labor Party, who have a litany of failures behind them when it comes to procuring major projects.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I rise to speak on all three items in the Establishment and Coordination Committee report. Look, firstly, with respect to the item B, the Stores Board's significant contracting plan for the on-street payment systems. Yet again, we've got another botched contract process by the LMP administration. From my understanding of this, this was one of the recommendations of the Parking Task Force, and they certainly recommended that council take steps to improve the efficiency of payment systems, as well as a range of other things as part of the Parking Task Force committee. Now, that was announced with a lot of fanfare quite a few years ago. It's taken years for the administration to get the procurement process up and running, and now they're just scrapping it, just scrapping it. It's all a bit hard, we won't do it at the moment, we'll just keep going on without any tenders, we're just going to roll over with the current people. One of the most hated... Yeah, like a routine, like a lot of things this lot of doing, they've got no... I know he's getting his cheat sheet from the deputy mayor. There's no real foresight and planning for how to improve things for the residents and businesses of Brisbane, and that is a problem. This administration got elected, and in many ways, I think they must have been surprised because they are simply just rolling along without making good decisions for our city. This one, this one, I think they've got plenty of advisers, is my understanding, I just don't think there's a lot of strategy or ideas in the advice they're getting. The problem we've got here is they are simply scrapping a process that's cost this council hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars already, we don't know, and they're going to simply roll over for a very significant period, contracts with council's current suppliers. It's very unclear in all of this whether or not we're getting any efficiencies out of it, we're getting any improvements in technology out of it. You know, the paper we've been given today basically is a couple of lines only, there's literally, I think, six paragraphs about it. It's really disappointing that there's not more discussion, you know, about this. But the biggest problem I've got is, and this is what this administration has done time after time after time, is they promise one thing and then they do something else. So they cannot be relied upon to deliver what they say they are delivering, whether it comes to the metro or broadband in the sewers or you name it. They will announce something and talk about it and talk it up, but then they fail to deliver it. And this is yet another example of a promise that the LMP administration, their own promise that they said they would do, that they're not doing. With respect to item C, the proposed advertisement interim local law, this is a product completely of the LMP administration's own making. These huge electronic billboards have proliferated up and down main roads in our city over the last few years because of the actions of the LMP councillors. And it's only when the most marginal LMP councillor comes under some pressure in his own area that the LMP decide to do something. Now, I remember having a debate with councillor Burke about this on radio three years ago, and he's sitting, no, no, they won't be everywhere, we won't let them be everywhere. Here they are, giant electronic billboards that are up to sort of 20 metres high, they are outrageous, they are everywhere, they are invasive, they are distracting, they are dangerous to drivers, they are visual pollution in our suburbs. And it is just unacceptable that this administration only acts because an LMP marginal member has come under pressure. The changes to the advertising local law that this administration has brought through in recent years have set our city back. You can have as many election signs as you want, you can make them as big as you want. I mean, this is all about creating visual pollution in our suburbs, and it's not necessary. Now, the amendment before us today barely touches the edge of where it needs to go. And in my view, and I'll certainly make some further submissions on the process when the law is released for consultation, however, I want to add an amendment to this, and I move the following amendment. That with respect to attachment B, sorry, subsection five, amendment one, section 12, 1AA, three and four are amended to include the words 'traditional building character overlay', so they read 1AA3 on land that is identified in the commercial character building overlay, traditional building character overlay and the pre-1911 building overlay, and four, within 50 metres of a building that is identified within the commercial character building overlay, traditional building character overlay or the pre-1911 building overlay. And I need a second.
Second. Excuse me, I have an amendment resolution presented by councillor Johnston, seconded by councillor Strunk. Councillor Johnston, I trust you have that in writing, and that will be able to be distributed to councillors.
I'll sit.
Thank you. Please distribute that when it arrives, councillors, that should arrive in your emails presently. And councillor Johnston, to the amendment, please.
And now we're going to have a debate where no one's seen the motion, so you understand the problem. No, you don't understand, you don't even know what I've moved.
Well, councillor Johnston, I will respond to your gratuitous comments. I've called on you to speak to your amendment. You can stand there in silence for 10 minutes if you wish, but...
I just don't think it's a problem.
No, no, the resolution, your amendment resolution is being distributed to councillors right now. If you would like to speak to it, you're welcome to.
I will.
Alternatively, you don't have to, that's the choice available to you. Councillor Johnston.
I will absolutely speak to it, and I'm going to just say that I find it very sad that you don't have a copy of it nor any other councillor, but you're telling me too, so that's what I will do.
Sorry, councillor Johnston, I've got to stop you there. I have a copy of it, I just saw it. I trust that all councillors should have a copy of it by now, because the system's pretty simple and works pretty well. Please continue.
Anyway, as I said, this amendment does not work to cover all the areas that we need to. Now, there may not be a lot of signs that are in the traditional building character overlay, but we should not be excluding that. Certainly, I believe there are other zones that should be excluded from the electronic advertising areas, certainly they shouldn't be in any low-density areas. I don't believe they should be within certain distances of intersections, there's a lot of other issues here. But for the purposes of today's debate and for this interim local law, I've added the words 'traditional building character overlay' to ensure that they don't pop up in any other areas where there is traditional character buildings, such as houses. And whilst there shouldn't be any in those areas, in older suburbs like mine and in other inner-city areas, you will often find that there are billboards in close proximity to character homes. So certainly I don't want to see any oversight in the making of this interim local law, and this is a very simple amendment that makes sure that these electronic billboards are not in commercial character building overlay areas, not in the pre-11 building overlay areas and not in the traditional building character overlay area, and I encourage all councillors to vote for the amendment.
Further speakers? Councillor Sri, it's to the amendment.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on the amendment before us, and I think it's a good one, and I'm pleased to be able to support it. I think it's important that we understand that this is a broader problem across our city, it doesn't just apply to a few character commercial precincts. The proliferation of corporate advertising throughout the city is getting out of hand at the moment, and it is something that I think all councils in this place should be a little bit more concerned about, and through you, Chair, to the Lord Mayor. I would encourage the administration to think seriously about tighter regulations in this respect. The administration doesn't really gain much by allowing the proliferation of advertising like this, but we do know that it does materially impact people's quality of life and the amenity of the neighbourhoods, and it also does actually impact safety and the legibility of the streetscape for motorists. I've talked to TPO officers on a number of occasions who complain about the creeping proliferation of different forms of signage in the public realm. There's so much signage that the really important street signage now is harder to see and notice. And there are times when we've requested signs from TPO, for example, that are perhaps non-essential, and they've said, we don't want to clutter the landscape with too many signs because that would distract people from the most important street signs. But of course, cluttering of the landscape is exactly what's happening here because of so many large billboards being allowed in an area where they're not really needed or wanted, frankly. And I think this really goes to one of the core principles of good local government, which is the idea that local residents should have a meaningful say in how their neighbourhoods change and evolve. If major changes are being made to a streetscape or to an urban environment, the residents who walk through that area, who travel through that area every day, should at least have some mechanism to voice their concerns. But the current processes for residents to have a say when it comes to billboard advertising are woefully inadequate, and continually I hear from residents who are surprised and disappointed that changes have been made and new advertising signage has been approved, without them even hearing about it in advance. And as councillor Johnston and others have identified, there are broader, deeper problems with our entire approach to assessing and approving advertising in this city. And these concerns were flagged the last time the local law was amended or updated, and it's been disappointing that the administration didn't take those concerns seriously at the time. But this particular amendment before us, simply to include extra protections in areas that are close to traditional character building overlay sites, makes sense to me because there are some parts of our neighbourhood where the commercial strip itself might not be covered by a character overlay, it might be a slightly newer set of shops, but just around the corner you have historic homes and a more traditional character environment. And in that kind of context, the presence of really large, bright LED billboards does materially detract from the character of those neighbourhoods and undermines the entire point of council trying to preserve character in our precincts around the city. So I would have moved other amendments as well, but I'm concerned that the administration isn't going to seriously entertain them. I think the administration should consider a larger buffer zone. For example, currently the rules seem to prohibit advertising signage within 50 metres of the areas mentioned, of the pre-1911 homes and commercial character overlay sites, et cetera. I would go so far as to say that the exclusion zone should be more like 200 or 300 metres, because we're talking about often busy main roads where we want to minimise visual distraction as much as possible, and I would like to see the administration seriously consider extending that at least to 100 metres, but if not that, if not 200 or 300 metres. I think my comments on the proliferation of billboards in general have been heard many times in this place, but I am going to harp on about it because it's something that's important to a lot of residents. And frankly, the billboards don't make council a lot of money anyway, so I don't really see that we gain much as an administration and as a local government from allowing them to proliferate. Residents don't like them, residents don't appreciate being presented with so much commercial advertising when they're moving through their neighbourhoods. And frankly, I think even a lot of business owners don't like them. I talked to business owners in some of these precincts who are frustrated because they feel like the proliferation of advertising is tacky and gaudy, and often it's advertising which serves the interests of larger corporations rather than advertising for local small businesses. And I think that is something that needs to be looked at more closely, and I think we should have a process where before any large billboard, LED or otherwise is approved in an area, residents receive warning of it, and a sign is erected in the location to inform them that a billboard might be on the way, and residents are able to give comments, and the councillor is able to give comments. And ideally then, there is a public vote among interested residents before the ad can be erected. And if the majority of residents vote against the advertising billboard going in that location, then it shouldn't be installed there, and that's democracy, give the people a say. And if you're concerned that that would mean that advertising billboards wouldn't be approved in a lot of locations, well, that's because residents don't want them there. And forcing this stuff on people undemocratically is really concerning and I think frustrating to people who already feel like they've lost control of their neighbourhoods, they already feel frustrated at the fact that they don't get a say when new developments occur, or they don't get consulted meaningfully about new road widening and infrastructure projects. At least give them a say on where the ads are installed. Come on, that's not too much to ask, surely. I think this also touches on the broader concerns.
Councillor Sri, I've got no objection to what you're saying, other than I feel like that this is actually probably a debate for the substantive debate later. I'm not sitting you down, I'm just asking you to say, I'm just going to ask you to bring, to come back to the amendment resolution before us, rather than a lot of your comments, which I think are regarding the substantive. Please, councillor Sri.
Thanks, Chair. Now, I defer to your advice on that, and I will simply say the rest of my comments for the main debate, but conclude by saying that I think the amendment is a good one, and I think our traditional character building areas in this city do need greater protection.
Further speakers?
Point of order, Chair.
Councillor Landis.
Mr. Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
It's been moved by councillor Landis, seconded by councillor Adams, that this council now adjourns for the purpose of afternoon tea, for a period of 15 minutes commencing when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Thank you, councillors. Also, while we're all here, the attendance book won't be distributed around the room, it will be on this table in front of us, please sign it in a COVID-safe way this afternoon at your convenience. Try and try, try it. Try and try, try it. Was being conducted before we broke for afternoon tea. Are there any further speakers to the amendment? To the amendment? Councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. That counter is still on from before.
It'll reset in a moment.
Right. Yes, no, Chair, we are happy to support this amendment given this interim local law is, I suppose, setting the scene. And the community will need to be consulted when it comes to what will be included in the advertisements' local law that this will be triggering. So we think that the full suite of options should be on the table. And we think this is a reasonable approach to include the traditional building character overlay in the interim local law to protect what is left of Brisbane's character.
Further debate? Any further debate? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For those who might be listening or will read this at a later point, no one in the LNP administration has chosen to spoke, to speak on the amendment. And I presume that means that they will vote the amendment down. I'd be very surprised if there's a different outcome. Earlier today, the Lord Mayor stood up and jumped up and down about urgency motions. And they're not really about what they're about. This exposes the hypocrisy of the LNP councillors. When substantive motions come to this place for debate, they refuse to speak to them. They vote against them. And no doubt, when I sit down after this amendment motion and we move back to the debate proper, there'll be a vociferous attack from the deputy mayor about whatever it is that she feels is wrong with this amendment. And that just shows, I think, how little the LNP care about the representative democracy in which this city functions. We were given no notice about this local law amendment, that's interim local law amendment, that's coming through. We were notified on Thursday. We weren't asked to contribute to the local law. We weren't asked to put in feedback. I would, I will certainly be putting in a submission about a lot of other aspects of the advertising local law that are wrong. But in the interim, I want the interim local law to include character areas. Now, I'm sure councillor Adams' debate will be, 'Well, you can't do that in a character area now.' Unfortunately, because of the way in which this LNP administration changed city plan in 2014, you can pretty much do whatever you want in a character residential area now. You can build a huge shopping centre. You can build a huge childcare centre. And next thing, you will have a giant electronic billboard on it as well. That is not acceptable. It is really important that we make this change immediately today, so it's in the interim law. It is great that councillor Shree wants to look at extending the distance for signs. I think that's essential. 50 metres basically is across the road. It is not far enough. And you can have within a couple of hundred metres people's homes, directly across the road, people's homes. And they may be outside the 50-metre footprint. It's not enough. These huge electronic billboards are causing havoc in our local community. They are dangerous. They are invasive. And they absolutely are distracting for drivers, pedestrians and cyclists. And they should not be allowed in certain areas of the city. They should not be allowed facing into intersections. They should not be allowed in character areas. And it is really important that, instead of playing a few political games and having a good old laugh at Peter Matic, that this LNP administration does the right thing and makes substantive changes that will assist the residents of Brisbane. Because I can tell you where these have gone up in my ward, residents are extremely unhappy. And I'll be sure to tell them today, not just that I moved an urgency motion, which I do from time to time, I moved a substantive motion. And guess what? The LNP could not be bothered to speak to it and they are going to vote it down. I'll just say, I look forward to making further contributions to the advertising local laws. As I said, there's a lot of other things that need to change. But I urge all councillors in this place to make sure these signs go nowhere near our character precincts. And it is, if people think that things are not happening in character areas, I've got a major shopping centre proposed in the character residential one area. It's just not acceptable that that's allowed to happen. And in older suburbs, character residential is hard up against commercial, and that is where we get conflict. It's just not acceptable. And we need to make sure that any changes we make very substantively stop the problem, not just whack a Band-Aid on it for immediate political purposes.
I'll now put the amendment. All those in favour of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
And those against the amendment, please say no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnson and councillor Shree. Please ring the bells. As all councillors are here, we will conduct the vote. All those in favour of the amendment, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you. And all those against the amendment, please say no and raise your hand.
No.
Clacks, please read the result when you're ready. Please lower your hands.
Mr. Chair, the noes have it, the voting being six in favour and 18 against.
The noes have it. We will now return to the substantive resolution. My understanding, councillor Johnson, you've got the balance of your speech, five minutes, 19 seconds.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. I thought moving amendments ceased your substantive speech.
Only if you're successful. If you're successful, if the amendment's successful, then you don't get your time back. And if you're unsuccessful, you do. Councillor Johnston, five minutes, 19 seconds.
Yes, thank you so much. Look, just on the substantive, I'm disappointed but not surprised by what the LNP's done. And I think it is just disappointing generally when these local law amendments come up and there's been just no discussion with councillors. It's not a reasonable way to govern the city to dump something in here and then just expect us to vote for it. Our option then is to put amendments forward that we believe are in the best interests of the city. And then certainly, the LNP councillors won't even speak to it to explain their reasons why they don't want to support the changes. That is arrogant, unreasonable, unprofessional. And it is certainly not in the best interests of the city, in my view. The, this amendment needs to go a lot further. I look forward to making some further suggestions, all of which no doubt will be ignored as the LNP have done for 10 years in my area, ignored the feedback that gets put through. But there is a lot of anger in our community about the way in which this LNP administration has allowed advertising to proliferate in the suburbs. This local law does not go far enough to stop the problems. And there need to be other substantive changes around the zonings where electronic advertising should be allowed. I think there should be restrictions on the size of the electronic advertising. I don't believe they should be located within a proximity of intersections or allowed to face intersections. I don't believe that they should be within certain distances of each other. I don't believe they should be in areas where we might have schoolchildren and other vulnerable people. So there are a lot of issues here, and I think this administration has not got this local law right. I don't even know that it's going to fix the problem in Paddington. This is, this is the issue with these people. Because they've done no consultation, I mean, people will find a way around this because it's so narrowly written. And a more holistic look at where to put and where we should be allowing these electronic notice board type signs, if at all, should have been undertaken, rather than just trying to whack a Band-Aid on a problem to prop up poor old Peter Matic, who's staggering around on his last legs.
Yep. Further speakers? Councillor Shree?
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak. This is still counting down from the last thing.
It should, it should be there.
It's reset now. Yeah, I rise to speak on the motions before us in the report and might just ask that item B be taken seriadum as well?
So, excuse me, councillor Shree, we're just reviewing something.
Just ask that item B be taken seriadum as well. So I assume that A, B and C will all be.
Voting seriadum, item B. The practical effect, all items will be now alone. Councillor Shree.
Thanks, yeah. I'm obviously excited to see that project funding under item A regarding the Victoria Street-Montague Road intersection. And I'm pleased that that project is progressing. I reiterate my previous advice that as much of the work as possible should be undertaken during daylight hours and that that's certainly my preference as local councillor, as opposed to disrupting local residents' sleep. And if that means that that road is a little bit more congested during the day as a result of the roadwork, then that's a fair trade-off. Also want to, in regards to that item, point out my concerns so that councillor McGlocklin is aware of them directly. There's been a request to use part of Davies Park as construction site, storage or layover space to facilitate that intersection upgrade. And I've recommended that instead of using the very limited public green space, that we instead use part of the very wide and available public roadway. So I've suggested, don't put a layover zone all the way down in Davies Park, just put it in the broader area of Victoria Street. I think it would be preferable to lose a few bays of street parking as opposed to residents, as opposed to residents being locked out of that part of Davies Park for the duration of the project. I remain concerned in general about the fact that we keep using public parks as storage for construction materials. That's not what they're there for. They're there for the community. Just a few extra comments on item C. I think I made my point fairly clearly before, but I just want to restate and remind all councillors in this chamber that advertising in its modern form is not about making people aware of a product that they need or advising people that a necessary product exists. Advertising in its modern form is about manufacturing dissatisfaction and discontent. It's about making people feel like they're inadequate or that they won't be satisfied unless they have a new product or service. It's about creating demand for things that people don't need and about manufacturing desires when people don't actually want the thing that they're being told they have to buy. So in that sense, the proliferation of advertising is about making people unhappy. It's about conning people into believing that they won't be happy until they buy this good or service that they don't actually need. Now, most people understand that. If you sit down to have a conversation with the average resident, they'll say, 'Yeah, of course. That's exactly what advertising is. I already know the things I need to buy. Advertising is about convincing me to buy things I don't need. Companies wouldn't need, don't need to spend money advertising the basic essentials. We already know we want them.' But the proliferation of advertising in cities like Brisbane now is at a scale and that, I think, far exceeds what is reasonable and what most members of our community actually want. I'm always struck on the occasions when I visit Canberra, how different the urban landscape looks there because Canberra has much stricter rules against advertising and billboards in general. It's quite refreshing, actually, to be able to drive down a street and look at the trees and look at the buildings rather than just looking at the ads. And I think that's something that this city should aspire to. I've also visited cities like Tokyo in Japan. And I can tell you that feeling bombarded by really bright 24-hour-day advertising is not a positive experience. It's not something that I want this city to follow or emulate. I'd much rather this be a city where people can move through the public realm without feeling like they're being constantly marketed at. And I do, I do think there's some space for non-profit and community org advertising. I do draw a little bit of a distinction in the sense that if a community group or some important cause needs to be promoted to residents, that's perhaps another thing. But commercial advertising, which is very clearly about tricking people into thinking they need to buy something that they don't actually need, that serves no useful purpose to society and isn't something that we should be bending over backwards to support. It's disappointing to see how much influence advertising companies have over both the major political parties. And I do take note of the donations that flow from advertising companies to the political parties. And I don't know if they get extra meetings or special access as a result of that. I assume they don't donate out of the goodness of their heart. It's not as though they're doing it just for fun. They're obviously think they're getting something in return for making those donations. And I think it's disappointing that there hasn't been a deeper, more nuanced conversation about the role of advertising in the urban landscape. And I hope that this particular issue will be a catalyst for broader reform of the advertising local laws and will prompt the administration to think a little bit more deeply. And my challenge to all the councillors in here, particularly the LNP councillors, is to just ask a few people. Actually, ask them, what do they actually think about the fact that there are so many ads along all our streets, even in our public squares increasingly? I don't think many residents really want it there. I think some residents tune it out or try to ignore it. But it's now so pervasive and omnipresent that it's getting really hard to ignore. And every time you move through and in a city public space, you're saturated with commercial advertising. So I, yeah, I think my comments on this topic are probably very familiar to most councillors in this place. I shouldn't withhold my criticism of the major political parties, including the Greens, for continuing to advertise on public billboards. I think that too is problematic. And I don't think any political party should be giving money to these advertising companies because they're parasitic on society and they do us all harm. And hopefully, in the future, we can have a, have a public space that's free from unwanted commercial advertising. And we can just look at, look at the nice buildings and look at the trees and look at one another rather than looking at marketing for stuff that we don't need.
Further speakers? Councillor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I rise to speak on item C that we have before us today, the advertising interim local law. And let's make that very clear here. We are talking about the interim local law because a lot of the debate today seems like they're, we're already getting into the substantive local law, which does need to be reviewed based on the acceptance of this interim local law if it goes through today. The idea here, first of all, is to just update one little section of the advertising local law. Because I just would like to read out to the chambers, so everybody is clear, particularly councillor Cassidy, unfortunately, who has left the chambers here, who was saying that this was not about residents and was not about houses, it was only about one little section. It is about one little section of the advertising local law whose main aim is to show that advertisements and associated structures are constructed and maintained to essential standards of public safety and complement, or at least do not unreasonably detract from desirable characteristics of the natural and built environment in which they are exhibited. That is what is already there. That is what council officers do already.
No dejections, please.
And for 10 years, we have seen in this place increasingly large-scale digital billboards that are coming into the city as a new world city. As we heard from councillor Shree, they are overseas in far more proliferation than what we see here as well. But the display of third-party advertising, particularly in circumstances where we're talking about today, has been very difficult for council officers because even when we refuse them, when we say no, we are seeing those decisions reversed on appeal in P and E court continually, continually. So what we have here today is an interim local law to address, obviously, the concerns that were made very clear to us about the community and, as it was, in councillor Matic's area, but across the city when this issue came up, around the digital billboards, particularly the large digital ones in areas of heritage and significant pre-1911 and commercial overlay. So we do need to look at interim local laws now and then to the changing needs of the city, the changing community expectations. And that is what this proposal is here today. It is not the substantive local law. It is not an extensive change. It is an interim local law which goes to the state government for an interest check and becomes the interim local law for a six-month period, while we then start the process of the amending the substantive advertising local law 2005. And the amendments we have here before us today, high-impact electronic digital display components outside the city frame cannot be on a building that is a heritage place, within 50 metres of a building that is a heritage place, on the same road, road frontage, or on a commercial character building overlay or a pre-1911 building overlay. That is very, very clear. And that, in itself, protects the character precincts that we hear councillor Johnson jumping up and down about this afternoon. Within the CBD frame, it is on. Within the CBD frame, it is on those, as long as they are not on those buildings, there is no 50-metre restriction within the city frame. But as I said, this is for a six-month interim period while we do the, start the amending a local substantive local law, which will then go out to full consultation as any local law does. So the things that we're hearing today from those opposite are definitely something we're looking forward to in submissions, which sometimes and sometimes don't come in whenever we have these type of local law changes, which will happen within the next six months when we bring the substantive local law and go through that process as well. But we did hear loud and clear about residents and where they thought appropriate electronic billboardings adjoining signs and character values. But we need to be very careful here. Councillor Johnson is suggesting every TBC overlay within the city. Well, let's think about this, about your local church, your local theatre group, your local community group. If they want to get a advertising sign-up and make some money to make themselves economically sustainable in pretty difficult times, would they be allowed to? No, absolutely not. Same law.
Will the deputy mayor take a question?
I have plenty to get to. There is not one rule for the big corporations, as councillor Shree calls it, or the small community groups. So we need to be very careful that we are not stimming the opportunity for community groups to make sure that they have an opportunity to maybe gain some revenue. There is plenty of sporting clubs, again, within councillor Johnson's ward, I can think of a few football clubs, within character areas that have got very large signs at the moment that are there supporting them by giving them some revenue. But they would be out. They would be out. And I don't think they'd be very happy about that. So we need to think very carefully. So we have kept it to a very clear, defined area for the interim local law so that we can raise the restrictions at the moment and start assessing again so we can help these local clubs that want to get their billboards up as well and make sure that we can move on as a city. Because as we know, if councillor Shree had the control of the administration in this place, we would be making a public vote on every single decision that we do in this place, whether it's a billboard or whether it's a tunnel or whether it's a road. But guess what? We do have that democratic process and it happens every four years, on the last weekend in March, and we won. And the substantive advertising local law has been in place since 2005. And if people don't like it, we have actually amended in the last few years, they can have their say and they can have their say on ballot day. That is the democracy that we have in this place. But I can't let go the comments from councillor Shree about the big corporations. And I'd like to just repeat what advertising is by definition of councillor Shree. Advertising is manufacturing dissatisfaction and discontent. It's showing things that people don't need. It's about conning people about things. It's conning people about things they don't need. Well, councillor Shree may not accept donations from big corporations, but the biggest donator to billboard corporations right now is the Greens Party. And I can tell you, every billboard across this city is filled with Green signs. He has no problems giving them the money, just won't take it from them. And the largest sign on every other house down the street would be the Greens Party. Talk about conning people about things they don't need. Absolutely, absolutely, all want. And I tell you what, if you love the Covid shutdown, that's the way to go for a Green administration.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Thank you. So I'm sure maybe you should check with headquarters in Greens, Green headquarters there, councillor Shree, before you decide that there's not going to be billboards around for the Greens Party because your party is the one that are out there right now using those dissatisfaction and discontent billboards that are conning people into things that they don't need. This is an interim local law to protect the most valuable parts of the city, our heritage places, our pre-1911, our commercial character, which by their nature are surrounded by traditional building character and hence preserve those areas as well. We already have in place the reflections criteria that the officers use. And councillor Cassidy back in the chambers mentioned about residents that have issues with light in their houses. That should not be the issue, we ask you to raise that with the built environment offices because it is very clear in already our local law that advertisements should be orientated in a way that do not create low sunlight reflections or they do not create headlight reflections in a driver's line of sight to pedestrians or to residents. This is read directly from the advertising local laws 2005 under section seven, reflectance. Those criteria are there. This is an interim local law to protect our most valuable parts of the city around our heritage, our pre-1911 and our commercial character, but allow some leniency around the CBD where we would expect to see this in the built-up areas of the city and to make sure there is opportunities for our community groups to have some economic sustainability going into the future. And I recommend it to the chamber.
Councillor Shree had a misrepresentation?
Thanks, Chair. And yes, I think it's a little bit disappointing that instead of engaging with the substance of what I was saying, councillor Adams just resorted to the old hypocrisy accusations.
Please put the misrepresentation.
Sure. Just to be clear, I don't support the Greens spending money on commercial billboard advertising. I made that clear very, very many times in the past. But I do think the LNP is a little bit jealous because obviously we can get a lot more yard signs than the rest of them.
All right. Further speakers? Further speakers? To Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Well, there's been some very interesting contributions today. And Deputy Mayor, you read my mind. As soon as councillor Shree started talking about manufacturing discontent and dissatisfaction, I immediately thought, hang on a second, that's exactly what the Greens political party is trying to do right now by billboard advertising. They are trying to create a big evil empire known as the corporation, which the Greens are going to save everyone from. This is classic socialist or, actually, no, sorry, I remember councillor Shree said he's not a socialist. I can't remember what he said. Something to do with anarchy?
Anarcho-communitarian.
Anarcho-communitarian, what, anarchist, okay? I'll just call it an anarchist. And I was also...
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order.
I'm sure there would be some who'd be quite offended by that suggestion. So I just want to ask the Lord Mayor if he's going to stick to that.
What's your point of order?
What suggestion?
No, 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 what's the point of order?
Well, calling me an anarchist.
Is that a question?
Right.
I don't understand, is the point of order you're asking?
The Lord Mayor has called me an anarchist and I'm asking whether you think that's appropriate language to...
Oh. Look, councillor Shree, I had, I had thought that you'd reflected on yourself in that manner, but if, no, in all fairness, if you find it offensive, then I will ask the mayor to withdraw. Well, if you're not offended, please.
Well, look, I'd be interested for councillor Shree to use general business to explain further what type of anarchist or, I don't know, what type of ideologue he is. But we'd all be very clear to know. But I would suggest that a big part of councillor Shree's agenda is to bring down the system that has served our city and our country very well for a very long period of time. So, I don't know, to me, that's some kind of brand of anarchy. But going back to the item at hand here, did you notice councillor Shree's language? It's not business that's advertising, it's not local business, it's not medium-sized business, not even big business, it's corporations. And the underlying tone of this is evil corporations. Evil corporations trying to manufacture discontent and dissatisfaction about tricking people. So when Guzman and Gomez advertises for a burrito, they're trying to trick you into eating a burrito. You don't need a burrito, they're trying to trick you. There are some amusing elements, I guess, to this claim. But one thing is for certain, the Greens Party is trying to trick you into voting for them at the moment on almost every billboard in the inner city and almost every fence on main roads around the city. And they're trying to trick you by claiming credit for new green bridges, stopping the zip line and pretty much everything else that council's done, apparently it's the Greens. But that's okay, that's okay. They don't engage in any kind of misleading advertising. And they certainly don't accept donations from corporations. They accept donations from the people that own corporations, that's fine, no problem. Yes, and the biggest corporation, corporate donation in Australian political history did go to the Greens, but that's okay. Anyway, I'm getting sidetracked. The point is, we've brought in some interim changes while we do some further work on more permanent changes, which the community will get to have a say on. And I do believe that there is further tweaking of the billboards, local laws that are required. I do believe that further changes can and should be made and we will be very open to consultation from the community and from corporations as well and from local business and from residents and from anyone that cares to have a say on this matter. Because one of the things that corporations do is that they employ a lot of people. And one of the things that corporations do is they support a lot of families in their day-to-day jobs. They put food on the table of a lot of families. And governments can't employ everyone, so there is a role for corporations, i.e. business and particularly local business, in the future of our community. So they are not all evil, like councillor Shree would suggest in his underlying messaging. In the end, a lot of corporations and a lot of local business are just trying to make a living and put food on their table for their kids and their families.
Point of order, councillor Shree.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
It is noted, Lord Mayor.
Yeah, so they're just trying to put food on the table, they're just trying to make a living. And the suggestion that somehow because they might be a corporation or a business that they've got evil intent, I think is a little bit of an outdated suggestion and very much an ideological suggestion of someone who subscribes to bringing down the system that has served us very well as a community. And I have to say, I will give credit to the Labour Party as well, surprise, surprise. Both the combination of Liberal or LNP and Labour councils in this place have served Brisbane very well. They have brought our city to a place where it is such a great and livable city to live in. And it's the combination of those two major parties that have delivered such a fantastic city which people love living in. And so councillor Shree and his Green colleagues are focused on manufacturing discontent when people actually love Brisbane. People think Brisbane's going in the right direction, but that's okay. Now, I couldn't sit down before talking about councillor Johnson's contribution earlier. And I think the opposition as well had a crack, particularly about the parking meter replacement. And I think both councillor Johnson and councillor Cassidy were having a crack because we've cancelled a plan to buy shiny new parking meters. Now, we're in an economic situation that has been unprecedented in our lifetime and the Labour Party and councillor Johnson thinks we should put millions of bucks into buying shiny new parking meters. Having said that, when they are not required, right now.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy. Claimed to be misrepresented.
Yes. So I would have thought...
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnson.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Noted.
I would have thought that there would be other priorities right now than buying a fleet of shiny new parking meters at this point in time. Maybe it's just me. So my approach to this is if the parking meters have another five year of life left in them, let's keep them. Let's save the ratepayers a bit of money. And when the five years comes up, then what we will see is improved technology whereby I predict that in five years' time, there will be no more parking meters. This is just my prediction. I don't think we'll actually need to buy any more parking meters because I think that people's mobile phone and other forms of payment will come to the fore. We're seeing cash payments...
Can the councillors please allow the Lord Mayor to be heard in silence?
We're seeing cash payments on things like parking meters on public transport dropping through the floor because of Covid. And I have a feeling that in a lot of places, that won't ever come back because people are used to paying through tap-and-go, they're used to paying through apps. And this could be, in my view, the way of the future when it comes to parking in Brisbane. And also, a more convenient way to make sure that people don't miss out on the opportunity to pay for parking and then get fined for not paying. If you've got the systems in place which allow everyone to pay. I'll give you an example, the toll road collection systems. We've come a long way from people stopping at toll booths and putting cash in the basket. Now, you drive through it, recognizes your number plate, you've paid. And it is accepted that this kind of technology can improve the way that we go about our business. And I think that in parking, the way it's moving, and it's moving very rapidly, that will also be the case. So right now is not the time to invest many millions of dollars in buying new parking meters. I think now is the time to save that money, keep the parking meters going for up to another five years and then have a look at what great technology is emerging down the track, which could make life better and easier for local residents. So I would simply say one final thing. Councillor Johnson said, we promised to put in new parking meters. But I'm very aware of our election agenda in March and I can tell you, we didn't go to the election promising to put in new parking meters. We certainly didn't do that. So any suggestion that we promised to put in new parking meters, now we're going back on our promise? Absolute rubbish. And councillor Johnson...
Point of order.
Point of order.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Yep.
Councillor Johnson is likely to claim that she's referring to a report in 2014.
Look, excuse me, Lord Mayor, your time's expired. I have three councillors with misrepresentations. The first one, councillor Shree.
Thanks, Chair. The mayor said I said corporations were evil. I don't think corporations are evil, I don't think it's possible for an inhuman entity to be evil. I do think corporations are soulless.
Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. I think the Lord Mayor is extremely confused about who initiated that tender process in the first place, but I never suggested or said at all that we should be installing new parking meters. My simple criticism was around the way in which he was managing this project.
Thank you, councillor Johnson.
Yes, the Lord Mayor also stated that I said we should be installing shiny new parking meters. I did not say any such thing. I said that there were concerns with yet another contractual stuff-up by the LNP and the failure to deliver on their own promises.
Thank you. Yeah, you had two, did you address both of them? Okay, please go to your second one.
Yes, and the Lord Mayor secondly referred to me saying he made some sort of election promise. He didn't. He promised to deliver on the Parking Task Force review recommendations and that is clearly what I referred to in my speech.
Thank you. I will now put each of these items will be put before you independently as a result of seriadums earlier. The, all those in favour of item A, please say aye. Excuse me, and those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Division called by councillor Cassidy. And councillor Griffiths, please ring the bells. As all councillors here will conduct the vote. All those in favour, please say aye and raise your hands. Thank you, and those against, please say no and raise your hands. And those abstaining, please say nothing, I guess, and raise your hands. Thank you. Could I, if you're ready, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 19 in favour, one against and four abstentions.
The ayes have it. On item B, all those in favour, please say aye and raise your hands. No, just say aye, just say aye. Those against, say no. The ayes have it. And on item C, all those in favour, please say aye. And those against, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Adams and councillor Howard. Please ring the bells. Okay, as all councillors here will conduct the vote. Okay, as all councillors here will conduct the vote. All those in favour, please say aye and raise your hand. Those against, please say no and raise your hand. And those abstaining. Clerk, please read the result.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being twenty-four in favour.
The ayes have it. That concludes the ENC report. I'll now move to the second ENC report. The ayes have it on A, B, and C, but here on the second report, Lord Mayor, the decisions, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as a delegate of council during the recess, the spring recess 2020, on matters usually considered by that committee be noted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the deputy mayor. The report of this setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of the council during the spring recess 2020 on matters usually considered by that committee be noted is in debate. The Lord Mayor.
Okay, item A is regarding the procurement of legal consulting services. The current contract with a panel of five suppliers expires on the 30th of April next year. The panel covers three categories and eleven subcategories of legal services. And a tender was approved by ENC as a delegate of council while council was in recess. The briefing for the tenderers was held on the 24th of September, at which over thirty different firms attended. The tender closed on the 16th of October and was structured differently to the previous tender to allow smaller local firms greater opportunity to tender in their area of expertise. It is anticipated that small firms will bring, in addition to a level of expertise, potentially more competitive pricing that can be used by council. And obviously, this is part of our initiatives to support local business, and it is good...
Councillors, please allow the Lord Mayor to be heard in silence. Lord Mayor.
It is good to give other people the opportunity where they have areas of expertise other than just the big firms. I think this is a great thing. Councillor Johnston may scoff, may ridicule, but I think it is a really good thing because it gives people like...
No, no, no interjections, please. Please allow the Lord Mayor to be heard in silence.
It gives people who have expertise that's recognized and proven in a particular area to bid and work with council regardless of the size of their corporation. So that is a good thing. Item B is the Stores Board submission for the construction and repair of concrete paths and driveways. Obviously, as part of our ongoing asset maintenance program, we have a network of footpaths and bikeways and shared paths around the city which require maintenance and construction. The existing procurement arrangement and the one that is proposed supplements council's own in-house ability to deliver such concreting works. So obviously, we have an in-house capacity to do work. We give our workforce a good, decent amount of work each year, but there's also opportunity to supplement that work with local companies that can help do the work as well. So that's about us gearing up to provide more maintenance, better maintenance, and also to make sure that we do continue to assess our own projects and our own delivery against the delivery that's performed outside of council. So what I'm specifically referring to there is our own in-house ability to build or repair footpaths and driveways with the ability of local business to do the same. And so it's a good benchmarking exercise as well, which allows us to continue to make sure we strive to deliver great service that is comparable to service that can be offered outside of council as well. The estimated expenditure over a nine-year term is more than $20 million, which obviously involves a significant injection into local business over and above the work that we give our own workforce. Item C relates to surplus property disposal, in particular, the surplus land at Carrara Street, where we had very clearly purchased some land as part of the bushland acquisition program to rehabilitate, land that was part of a koala corridor. And yes, it is, land that is part of a koala corridor, land that is located in the so-called triangle of death for koalas, land that is critical for koalas that move between places like Whitehill Reserve and the surrounding areas, land where local residents have regularly spotted koalas moving through the area. And this particular disposal is part of the site that we bought that wasn't necessary for rehabilitation. The money from the sale of this land will go back into the bushland acquisition, which will allow us to buy more land, which is good. There's also a number of other locations where council is disposing of surplus land. And as usual, where we do these disposals of land, some of them may be, we acquired land as part of a road project and they're no longer required, or we upgraded the road and there's surplus land, and there's a range of different situations here. But what happens, as always, is the money that comes from the proceeds of these sales is not something where councillor Adam Allen sits on a big pile of money. It's reinvested back into providing services and projects for the people of Brisbane, and that is a good outcome. So I'll leave my comments at that.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on all of these items, and just ask that item C be taken serial item for voting, please.
Item C, voting serial item.
C, yes, that's right, at the outset, thanks. So starting with the item A, the legal consulting services contract that we have before, the Stores Board submission that we have before us today, this is a submission to go out to ten for over $22 million worth of legal services, Chair. According to the report, council has been spending around $3.68 million a year to engage external legal services. And for the life of this tender, this administration's just times that by six to get a six-year contract estimate of $22.1 million. It doesn't seem like a very scientific way to figure out what the expenditure will be over the life of this contract. But what is incredible is that we do have an in-house team chair of over fifty solicitors and paralegal professionals providing legal support to council in a wide range of areas, including property planning as well as prosecuting and litigation. But here we see the ENC giving approval to contract out $22 million for legal services to council. So it's quite obvious how this administration treats the city legal team now, and that is that they are a P O box. Matters are referred into them, and then matters are referred outside to other legal companies. Instead of building up the capacity and the capability, there's certainly a large team in the city legal office. The propensity of this administration to outsource jobs knows no bounds, Chair. On clause B, construction and repair of concrete paths and driveways, this, I think, Chair, when I think of basic council services, really basic council services, there are a few things that come to mind. Concrete paths, driveways, turfing, and minor drainage works are just some of those, Chair. So why do we not do these in-house? Why are we contracting out basic community works to the lowest bidder, Chair? If we look closer at this contract, it's listed to go for nine years and cost $20 million, Chair. Nine years. You cannot tell me, Lord Mayor, through you, Chair, that nine years' worth of programmed work is not ongoing work. To give this chamber an idea of just how ongoing this work will be, Chair, across the city, forty percent of our streets don't have a concrete footpath, and only thirty percent have a partial footpath. Over 2,000 kilometers of footpaths are broken, dangerous, and in need of desperate repair. Now, we know from answers in the questions on notice today, in today's agenda, that there are 2,200 kilometers of streets that have absolutely no footpaths at all on them. That's 2,200 kilometers, and on both sides of the street, there is no concrete footpaths whatsoever at all, Chair. So that's a long way. When you think about the size of our city, Chair, you know, from Brighton to Bell Bowery, that's a long way. I mean, we know councillor Adam had knocked off one of the largest footpaths this city would ever have seen, the Green Bridge over there, Chair. But 2,200 kilometers, you think about that, from Brisbane to Kakota is about 2,200 kilometers. From Brisbane to Hobart is about 2,200 kilometers. Now, that's the number, that's the length of streets in this city that have absolutely no sealed footpath whatsoever. So there is a lot of work. There is a lot of work for this administration to do, Chair, and that should be done by council employees. The submission before us, Chair, also details that there is a medium risk that delivery of these works and performance won't be up to scratch. Once again, you get these types of risks when you contract basic services out. If you made these jobs in-house, you would eliminate the risk of a subpar job being done because council has more control and oversight, eliminate the risk of worker exploitation and underpayment, and supply solid, reliable jobs for Brisbane residents when they need it the most, Chair. It says in the report that the original panel was established to supplement council's in-house capability. It's not supplementing it now, they're just downright contracting out basic services, Chair. If it was originally set up to supplement these services by now, council would have a very good idea of what services are required to carry out these works with council workers. We know exactly where our footpaths are. We have a very clear picture over the last couple of months where our footpaths are, where our footpaths aren't, and where they are broken, Chair. There is an inventory of the condition of these that is recorded, and these contracts respond to work that is programmed by council. So council knows this is ongoing work. So all those platitudes that this Lord Mayor and previous LMP Lord Mayors have made, and when they've said that if there's ongoing work in council, that will be done by permanent council workers, they were all lies, Chair. So there is no supplemental work needed anymore. We know it's become core work of council. So the case to in-house this work is very, very clear. On clause C, Chair, asset optimization, the surplus property disposal. If we look at the property list in this report, the Lord Mayor's already touched on that one, it really rings a bell. 64 Carrara Street, Mount Grabat East, in the attachment, we can see that it's a house and a tennis court. We remember the old house and tennis court and a few cocus palms well, Chair, when this administration said that that was vital koala habitat, which evidently had no trees on it whatsoever. No, yeah, apparently, according to the LMP, councillor Cumming, I'll take the interjection, cocus palms are koala habitat, apparently, and koalas love to play tennis. They love to play tennis. But on the council, on the council books, this is apparently a piece of koala habitat because it was purchased for bushland, even though it's a house and a tennis court. What an absolute wort, Chair, that this was. This land was part of three blocks purchased with the Bushland Acquisition Fund for political purposes to save an LMP councillor from angry residents in a marginal ward. These blocks are once again subject to investigations by the Queensland Audit Office. They were purchased using $6.2 million of the Bushland Acquisition Fund, which residents pay for, and now one of these blocks is being sold off for a fraction of that price. Now, Chair, I thought the levy was there to preserve bushland, not buy empty blocks and houses with tennis courts and cocus palms on them, only to turn part of that land into a park and sell off the home next door. And that is what this piece of land is now described as, a park. Yes, councillor Adams, I'll take the interjection, that's what your administration describes this land as. When you named it recently, it was a park. This sale is just another admission by the LMP that they grossly misused the Bushland Preservation Levy, Chair, and they have been dishonest with Brisbane residents. The River City is a wort city under this administration. The profit from these sales absolutely should be used to purchase actual and legitimate bushland as habitat as a matter of priority.
Further speakers, councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise on item B, Stores Board submission, construction and repair of concrete paths and driveways. As part of our ongoing asset maintenance program, council has a network of paths and bikeways around the city that will require construction and maintenance over the coming years. As the Lord Mayor has already said, the existing procurement arrangements and the one proposed is intended to supplement council's own in-house ability to deliver such concreting works. And while the current procurement arrangement has seven suppliers, I'm pleased to see that three small local businesses have been delivering the majority of the work. And with an increase in number of minor concreting projects to be delivered this financial year, the purpose of this contracting plan is to expand the number, available number of smaller local suppliers. And the procurement arrangement will be an initial term of three years with an option for extensions up to nine years, the key word being option, and that option will be used if and when more footpaths are required. Now, I don't know about you, Mr. Chair, but as a local councillor, I consult with my local residents, and surprisingly, a lot of residents don't actually want a footpath in their street, on either side of their street. And I don't know about you, Mr. Chair, but I, as a councillor, am not going to go and force a footpath on people's front yards that they do not want. That's not my role as a councillor. So I would suggest to some of the streets that have been named, the kilometers of streets that have been spoken about that have no footpaths is purely and simply because residents don't want them. We're not about throwing money into something that people don't want. If people want a footpath, then they know what they need to do. They contact their local councillor, their councillor, well, hopefully, consults with the people who live in that street, particularly the homeowners, and ask them if they concur and would like a footpath in their street. And if the answer is yes in the majority, well, then obviously, we look at funding that for that arrangement. That's where you'll get footpaths, streets that have no footpath. The estimated expenditure over potential, potentially in nine-year term is more than $20 million, which is a great win for locally-based small businesses. And in order to encourage these small businesses through the tender process, we'll be providing all interested suppliers with support and understanding of the tender and evaluation process with dedicated industry briefing. So we look forward to working with more and more local small businesses. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Excuse me, further speakers, councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on items A, B, and C, and I was only going to speak on item B, C, but I absolutely need to speak on item A now as well, legal consulting services. I want to thank the Lord Mayor for sharing with us his version of what are small law firms. I note, I note in paragraph nine that the objective of this procurement strategy was to broaden the opportunity for smaller specialist service providers. Now, here's another epic contractual fail by this LMP administration. If that was the objective, Lord Mayor, you are nowhere near it. Let me give you some idea of what you are proposing to do with respect to the law firms that you have chosen.
Councillors, can I just remind councillors, please address comments through the chair.
Yes. The law firms that have been chosen that you think are small. Clayton, Clayton Noots and Minter Ellison are top-tier law firms in Australia. Clayton Noots was founded in 1833. They have a national and international presence, and they have over 1,200 employees. But that's small, they're little, they're boutique. I mean, what can you do, Lord Mayor? I mean, my brother-in-law runs his own firm, and there's two of them, they're small, but Clayton Noots has 1,200 employees, top-tier firm. Minters, they're a multinational firm, they're in the top ten of all law firms in the Asia-Pacific. Then we go on to McCulloch Robertson. They're a second-tier firm, as is Coors Chambers Wethgar. McCulloch Robertson have 500 staff, 500. Sorry, Coors have eighteen, oh, they were established in 1841. I didn't get their staff numbers in my quick review, but I reckon they'd be pretty close to 1,000. The only one that's not in the top tier is Colin Biggers and Paisley, but they're established in 1900 and have 500 employees. There's not a small law firm to be seen. If this was your objective, the outcome is the opposite of what you set out to do. You cannot stand up and say that this procurement strategy is about getting smaller firms with boutique advice. You are putting onto our panel yet again some of the biggest law firms in the state. Now, number one that hasn't helped you, in my view, based on how I see...
Councillor Johnston, can I just ask you to address comments through me, please?
Yeah.
You're just saying, well, I haven't put those things on the panel, but you keep saying you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so can just, just can address me by, by the third person rather than you, that's all.
I didn't address anybody in particular, I didn't think, but anyway. The Lord Mayor is proposing some of the largest law firms in this state are employed to undertake council work. Now, that is the complete opposite of what he actually told this chamber and the residents of Brisbane. It shows yet again his failure in being able to deliver...
Point of order.
Point of order, Lord Mayor.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Noted.
You stood up and praised how small it was and what your strategy was, Lord Mayor.
Return the topic, please.
I can't see how you've come even close. You haven't even come close.
Councillor Johnston, I've asked you three times, no, no, councillors, please. Councillor Johnston, I've asked you three times to address all comments through, through the chair and to the chair. Could I ask you to do that again, please?
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor Shree.
I would respectfully suggest that, in the interest of the order of the chamber, it's worth also acknowledging that other councillors are calling out, and that's antagonising councillor Johnston, and that perhaps that's contributing to the problem.
I appreciate that. I do allow a level of interjection in this place, and, and also councillor Johnston isn't shy at having to guide people into dejections either. So, councillor Johnston, please, return.
Yeah, but you always call me by name. You don't call the Lord Mayor when he doesn't...
No, I don't always call you by name.
Yes, you do.
Even, even now, I called, I spoke to you in a general term, and I often speak in general terms. And no, I don't always call you by name. Councillor Johnston.
So let's be clear. Not only is the Lord Mayor's stated goal here for the employment of these law firms the complete opposite of what he's saying, this is it for information purposes only. This is a done deal that he did behind the scenes in E and C, and we don't get to change it, say anything, make amendments. It was done in secret by E and C, and now we've got to lump it. So if this is how it works with the Lord Mayor, if he sets out to get small boutique firms to a valuable and lovely goal, it simply has failed. Now, I make no assertion about any of these law firms on the list. They are all highly distinguished law firms. I'm sure they will do a good job for Brisbane City Council. I think that, you know, there's a few problems with how our legal matters run, but that's a different issue. Finally, on item C, I am shocked, shocked, that the LNP are out there selling off council assets. Just shocked. I mean, shocked. This, this, yeah, yeah. Thank you, councillor Adams. I'll take your interjection, because, you know, the chairman didn't hear that one clearly. Yes, I have been here 12 years, and every time you stand up and you decry the Labour Party for selling off assets and asset sales, and how terrible the Labour Party are, and guess what? Here we are today with millions of dollars of council assets being sold off, including the dodgiest deal that I have seen come through this council. Not quite as bad as the Federal Department's land deal down in, in the outer western suburbs of Sydney, but in Mount Gravat East, where a political decision was taken to buy back three residential blocks with no trees on them, in a residential street, and still has a house on it. And not only that, now we're selling it off, and I don't think this even covers the cost of the remediation of the blocks, the marketing, the advertising. I mean, it might just work out to cover that. It is disgusting that this Lord Mayor is prepared to do these sorts of deals to protect LNP councillors, but where valuable land in our suburbs is under threat, he refuses to buy it. He refuses to buy it. Now, let's be clear. Selling off council land, I can't be sure there's value for money in what is proposed here. It certainly doesn't appear so for me. This would be a great opportunity to look at, I mean, one of them's even being sold off, from memory, to somebody for billboards. I mean, you know, you just, this administration has lost the plot. You know, there's land in rural land being sold off on the edge of the city. I mean, why is that not parkland? Why are we not doing something more constructive? We're so desperate for sports fields, can't we put sports fields out there? I mean, you know, I, I don't know why there is not a more innovative approach. No, what we're seeing here is asset sales by the LNP council. You know, they stand up in here and they bang on about, I don't know, the, you know, 50 years ago, the ALP sold a library or a pool. Here we are, selling off land all over Brisbane, and who's doing it? The LNP is doing it. Are we going to get value for money? I doubt it, because this LNP administration cannot properly manage contractual matters, and I have no confidence in what they are doing here before us today. We were told that these blocks in Mount Gravat East were being purchased because they were koala habitat. They were not. Now, we are selling off, in their own words, we are selling off koala habitat. That koala habitat is a house and a tennis court and some palm trees. So you can't have it both ways. You absolutely misled people when this land came up for purchase. You did so for purely political purposes, and it is disappointing that, that where other reasonable requests are made, land in, say, the Brisbane River Corridor area, full of wildlife, migratory birds, all those kind of things, won't even consider that, plays semantics, won't even consider that, but it's perfectly okay. We're going to wheel and deal over in Mount Gravat East, and we're going to buy some land in a residential area to save councillor Adams bacon, and then we're just going to sell off the bit that we don't really want. It doesn't work that way. It does not work that way. You told us that you were buying koala habitat. Clearly you were not, and you've been caught out. You are now selling off chunks of land in other parts of this city that may well have other purposes. Has there been any discussion here about what we should do with surplus land? Did the Finance and Administration Committee have some sort of discussion that I'm unaware of, about what to do if there are redundant council assets? I doubt it. You probably had a presentation about pressing the POS button on the whatever at the call centre desk. I have no idea what goes on, but it won't be anything of substance. This council is making unilateral decisions for, in, in their own...
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Are there any further, excuse me, the Lord Mayor, misrepresentation?
Yeah, just quickly, councillor Johnson read out a list of companies that we'd supposedly given the contract to. If you actually read the document, we haven't actually awarded the contract yet. These are the old suppliers. So it's like a basic thing.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further speak, further speakers? Councillor, councillor, no, Alan. No, the law obliged me.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just quickly, I wanted to speak on items A and C. Firstly, item A, the legal consulting services. This relates to the provision of legal consulting services to council, and as you would expect, these are crucial services for a large and complex organisation such as council. The current contract with a panel of five suppliers, the ones that councillor Johnston read out for us just before, expires on the 30th of April 2021. The current panel, which councillor Johnston read up for us just before, covers three categories, 11 subcategories of legal services. When previously tendered, the tenders were required to cover all subcategories with a category before they could be considered for appointment to the panel. This restricted the ability for small specialist firms to be engaged. Panel members can be engaged for any of the categories or subcategories for which they were appointed. So, to councillor Johnston's point, through you, Mr. Chair, what we're looking at here was the approval of a significant contracting plan, not the awarding of the tender. So, with respect to this tender, a tender was approved by E and C as delegate while council was in recess. A briefing for tenders, as the Lord Mayor indicated, was held during September, which was attended by 30 firms. The current tender closed last week on the 16th of October 2020, and as you'd expect, there'll be a tender review process. Now, this tender was structured differently to the previous tender, in that there were six categories and 19 subcategories. A tenderer no longer needs to provide all subcategories under a given category. A tenderer can now apply for an individual subcategory, and this allows smaller, local niche firms greater opportunity to tender in their area of expertise. So, what we would expect from this tender, when it's ultimately evaluated, is we would expect to see a much broader range of firms included on the panel, not the ones that councillor Johnston read out earlier, which is the current panel. By allowing tenders the opportunity to submit a tender response for any number of individual subcategories, it is anticipated there will be a higher number of panel members, allowing City Legal to continue to engage with major law firms and also being able to utilise the expertise of smaller firms as required. So this provides some competitive tension, obviously, in the tendering process, but also it provides versatility for council operations as we go forwards. It is anticipated that smaller firms will bring, in addition to a specialised level of expertise, potentially more competitive pricing for council. So, as the Lord Mayor suggested, this is a great opportunity and a win for local firms and for council in achieving value for ratepayers. It also supports economic activity in Brisbane, which is vital as we emerge from the challenges of COVID. Now, to some of the points councillor Cassidy made, I'd probably use councillor Murphy's analogy, and that is that, you know, we don't buy a bridge every day, we don't buy a tunnel every day, we don't buy a Brisbane Metro every day, and accordingly, we need specialised legal support to help us with those contracts, and hence the need to look external to the Brisbane City legal practice. Now, BCLP does terrific work for council. They pump out a massive amount of legal work, and certainly in recent times, much of that work councillor Cassidy has been devoted to interpreting and understanding the laws and regulations that have been emanating from the ALP state government, which council has had to abide by. And, look, clearly, when councillor Johnston started speaking, I was really thrown. She was talking about who we've awarded the, the contracts to and how we haven't achieved the objective of awarding tenders or including small firms on our tender list. And then I realised what she's done is just pick up the document without reading it and just started to talk. Absolutely, absolutely. It's unbelievable. And I might add, and I might add, with such authority, with such authority. So it's just highly, highly entertaining there towards the end. Anyway, moving on to item C, the surplus property disposals. Now, council's asset optimisation team has worked really diligently to keep an eye on these parcels of land that we've got, and they've identified properties that are either underutilised or surplus to council requirements, and they've completed consultation to designate the properties in this document as surplus to council's requirements. These sites, once approved by this council, will be offered for sale by tender or auction, and will have contract terms of 30 days, and obviously through that process, we're hoping to optimise the sale price of these properties. The revenue from the sale of these properties will crystallise a return to ratepayers and avoid any long-term holding costs, therefore delivering a benefit to the residents of Brisbane. Now, there are five properties on this list that have been included, and I note that 64 Carrara Street, Mount Gravat, seems to have gained a lot of attention, but fair to say, this was a parcel of three properties that were purchased, and one of them is not required for our bushland objectives, and the sale proceeds are to be directed to the Bushland Acquisition Programme, once this property is sold. Now, there are four other properties, 1375 Litton Road, Hammond. This site has an area of 483 square metres, is zoned low-impact industry. Council created the lot as part of the Litton Road upgrade in 1984, and this is considered surplus to council's needs, and a sale is appropriate. There's 10 Pickworth Street and 652 Kestles Road, Mount Gravat. 10 Pickworth Street has an area of 410 square metres, and 652 Kestles Road has an area of 355 square metres. Both of these areas are zoned low, medium-density residential. The two subject properties were created after one property was acquired, and three properties were resumed for council road purposes as part of the Player Street Connection project. The subject properties became surplus sites after the road dedication occurred. Once again, a sale is appropriate. Lot 5, Strong Road, Debra. Council acquired the land on the 30th of June 1971 for reservoir construction purposes during the construction of the North Pine Dam. At the time of purchase, the site was within the Pine Rivers Shire Council local government area. However, since the amalgamation of local councils in 2008, it now sits within the Moreton Bay Regional Council local government area, not within the Brisbane local government area, and accordingly of no direct use to us. And last but not least, proposed Lot 6, Charlotte Street, Winham. It's a 1,619 square metre site. The Winham Central State School, which is close to it, was purchased by council from the Queensland Government in March 2012. The site is subdivided into five lots with an approved DA for the creation of proposed Lot 6 by splitting Lot 5 into two. Due to the current car park for the Winham Community Centre being located on the proposed Lot 6, a permissible change was also lodged and approved on the 16th of March 2018 to create a new car park to the rear of the Winham Community Centre. Once the conditions of the DA are satisfied, including the construction of the car park, Lot 6 will be surplus to requirements and accordingly sold. Now, to councillor Johnston's point, you know, certainly, you know, have we considered using these sites in another way? Do they have another use for council? The view we've drawn is no, that they are better put to the open market. And interestingly enough, if we ever do bring a site to this council, and certainly if we have a site available where we're looking for someone like CBIC to develop the sites, there's, you know, shrieks of outrage. So you can't have it both ways. You can't sort of suggest council should be adding value or developing these sites on one hand, and then on the next saying, look, you know, you can't do that. So I'll leave it there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Cumming? No, it isn't. Could you just push that button again for him? That's it, yep. You're on your way.
I just wish to speak briefly in relation to items A and C. In relation to item A, look, I know that councillor Johnson misread the item, but it's, this administration's been in for 16 years, and now they're finally getting around to looking for some, some cost savings with legal services. So, you know, well, I suppose better late than ever, better late than ever. And it'll be interesting to see what savings they can achieve. And it'll be also interesting to know, when the panel comes through, how much they're going to be charged, because some of these big legal firms could be charging anything from, my estimation would be $1,000 to $2,000 an hour for their senior partners to, to provide advice. The other thing that's not covered by this item is the briefing of barristers by the, by City Legal. We go into committee meetings when, and councillor, councillor Strunk picks up all the, the monies being paid out to barristers for various items. Again, they've been put out to tender as well, why not? And what hourly rate are they going to be charging council as well? So, so there is a real risk, as councillor, as councillor Cassidy said, it's the, of City Legal becoming a bit of a post office box, you know, the, any item comes in, send it out to the private sector, and then all you do is read the legal advice when you get it back, and then push, push it on to whoever requests in the first place. So I think there's considerable improvements could be made in this area, and I hope that they are made in the near future. The other item I wanted to refer to is item C, and that is the, the land being sold in Winham. Now, I've known that this was proposed. It's over 1,600 square metres of land. It's in a good location for developments in the eight-storey area of the Winham Manly Neighbourhood Plan, right next to a, a shopping centre, and if an eight-storey building was built there, it'd have magnificent views out over the bay towards Moreton Island and St Alina and Stradbroke in the, down to the south. And it would be a good location for development. But my concern is the fact that we've still got the council car park next door that adjoins the community centre, where council appears committed to putting in a car park that will basically heavily reduce the amount of car spaces that will be available to the general public. And this is an area where, as I said, it's part of the eight-storey area under the, under the council plan, there's, there is commercial streets nearby and everything. And my fear is that once this new car park is built, there'll be a lot of overflow parking on the, on the streets, and basically Charlotte Street will be, will be heavily parked out at any one time. And so I'm concerned about that. I'm probably continuing my debate that I've had with the, with council for some time, in that I believe the car park as it is, where people are left up to their own devices... in that I believe the car park as it is, where people are left up to their own devices to park, it actually provides a lot more car parking than will be left after the, after the flash new car park is built, which will basically heavily reduce the amount of parking available, and that's not, that's not satisfactory to me. It's good to see that there was agreement some time ago, and it's been done to expand the area of parkland in, in the, adjoining the, the community centre, that's a great thing. The only problem there is that it's been about three or four years now, and there's not a stick of, of playground equipment on the, on the area, and it's about time council got their act together and put in some good playground equipment around there. We've got a magnificent fig tree, which provides brilliant shade, especially during the hot summer months, and we need some playground equipment there as well. So I've got a qualified, a qualified support for this sale of this block of land, but I'd really like to see a practical solution in relation to the car park area so that we maximise the amount of parking available and not minimise it. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Griffiths?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairperson. I rise today to speak on item C, asset optimisation and surplus, the surplus property disposal, and in particular, I want to speak about the Carrara Street land at Mount Gravette East. I remember at the time this went through the chamber that we were told that part of the site that had been purchased was going to come back to council, so it's interesting that this is meeting its fruition today. And I realise that we can't talk about the value of that land, so I won't do that. I, I looked back on the report, the bush, the bushland acquisition report, and it was April 19 that this particular decision came through council, and I looked at the figures on that, and we purchased three of those properties, three house blocks, for $6.36 million. That was $6.36 million out of a budget that financial year of $10.6 million for bushland acquisition. So we spent the majority of our bushland funds that year buying these three house blocks, and these three house blocks were 0.68 of a hectare. So it wasn't even a hectare that we bought, and now some of that is going to be sold off, so it's less than 0.68 of a hectare we got. There was no flora or fauna on the land that we purchased, and that came directly from the council files, which I got a copy of. In fact, council officers questioned why we were buying this land. There were three houses, tennis court, driveway, and as everyone talks about, the cocus palms. And I did hear early today councillor Adams say in the debate that she's looking forward to our submissions in relation to the advertising law. While I don't recall ever seeing her make any submission against the townhouse development, and I also don't recall any objection, any objection from councillor Adams in relation to the actual clearing of the bushland that was on that site that led us to buy it. So sadly, we've spent $6.36 million of residents' money, bushland money, on this acquisition. And I know we all say it's a, it's a corridor, and it's very effective, the reality is there'll be many, many years before it can actually be used as a corridor for wildlife, particularly koalas. And I was so concerned, and we were so concerned, that we actually wrote to the Queensland Auditor, and the Queensland Auditor, in the last meeting we had, his report came to council, and he said our practice with bushland acquisition was deficient. That was Queensland Auditor said that. So it's very concerning that we've gone through this process, we've got the, out the other side of it, yeah, there's been a lot of hoo-haring, but the reality is we've delivered very little environmental benefit, which was the aim of this programme and the aim of the expenditure of this programme. So I, I think that's, I think that indicates to all of us that this isn't the right way to go, and that wasn't the right way to go. I, therefore, in terms of the, the money that's being spent here and the millions that potentially we could raise from this money, I'd be calling on council to put that money towards bushland acquisition. And I know that the Carrara Street money, it's said in that report, will go to bushland acquisition. What we would like to move today is all that money is put towards bushland acquisition, and so I'd like to move the following urgency motion, and I just sent it as I stood up as well, so.
Thank you.
Yep, so you should have it there somewhere, but I'll give you a hard copy.
I believe it's been distributed.
Yeah, it's been.
Yeah, that's pretty much appreciated as well. Thank you.
So I'm just getting used to multitasking with all these things, but I move suspension of standing orders to enable me to move the following urgency motion. The Brisbane City Council allocates all revenue from the sale of council properties outlined in today's paper, papers of the Establishment Coordination Committee report, clause C, Asset Optimisation, Surplus Property Disposal 2021, for the purpose of bushland acquisition. And I further move that priority be given to the purchase and saving of the threatened koala habitat on Beckett Road, Bridgman Downs, using these funds. That's the urgency motion.
Second. It's either a, an urgency motion moved by councillor Griffiths, seconded by councillor Strunk. Councillor Griffiths, three minutes to urgency, please.
Yes, yes, and the urgency is, Mr Chair, very simple. We have the opportunity here to, we have land that we're selling, that we all, obviously again, are looking at supporting, that this money should be going into preserving our natural flora and fauna. And in particular, I'm looking, or I'm requesting or seeking the support of the chamber to have all this money go towards the issue of the koala habitat on Beckett Road at Bridgman Downs, because that has obviously been a very controversial development. It's a development where we know that there is flora and fauna on site that can be saved by the actions of having, having bushland funds available. So this would send a very clear message that we, this council, support the retention and saving of this, this important wildlife corridor and this important land. It also gives us the opportunity to put more money into bushland and more money into bushland acquisition. And currently, of all the money we spend, all the money we collect for bushland acquisition, we actually only spend a third of it. We actually only spend a third of it on buying bushland. So last year, we collected $32 million, we only spent $11 million on buying bushland. And that's shocking, because what's happened is more and more core council activities are being funded out of this $32 million. And if we're actually using this money for what we tell residents we're using it for, and what they think we're using it for, then we should be ensuring that we're purchasing and saving more of the city's bushland, not less. That is, I encourage everyone in the chamber to support this urgency motion. Thank you.
Point of order? A point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
Could I ask that the two clauses are taken seriatum for voting purposes, please?
No, the, we will if it's substantial, but we're going to vote on urgency first.
Yes, thank you, and I'm asking that the two clauses within the urgency motion are taken seriatum for voting purposes. The 44.1 says that where a motion consists of more than one statement, action, concept, they can be put seriatum if any councillor so requests. There are two clear clauses within the urgency motion.
Oh, I understand, I understand the argument you're making, but in this instance, we will deal with procedural matter, and then we'll deal with substantive matter.
I'm asking for the urgency motion to be taken seriatum. There are two concepts within the urgency motion, and the rule does allow a motion, which this is an urgency motion, because it contains more than one clause or statement or action, it says where any councillor requests, it can be taken seriatum. So that's what I'm asking, we're not going to get to the substantive motion, I presume, so I'm asking for the urgency motion to be divided into two for the purposes of voting.
Councillor Johnston, my decision is that if we reach the substantive motion, then it would be permitted to be taken seriatum, each element, and however, we will deal with the procedural element first, and I am relying on section 44.4, the chairman's decision on whether a motion is capable of being put seriatum is final. Councillors, I'll now put the, the procedural element, please. All those in favour of urgency, please say aye. And those against, please say no. The noes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk. Please ring the bells. Thank you, councillors. All those in favour of urgency, please say aye and raise your hand. Thank you, and all those against, please say no and raise your hand. Thank you, please lower your hands. Clerks, please read the result when you're ready. Excuse me, are there any abstentions? Please read the vote when you're ready.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the vote being, sorry, the ayes have it, my apologies, Chair, the voting being five in favour, 16 against, and one abstention.
The noes have it. We'll now return to the substantive resolution. Councillor Griffiths, if you wish to continue, you've got five minutes, 18 seconds.
I don't think I'll use that long, I just want to say I'm disappointed that the LMP didn't support that, that was an opportunity to get a good result here for our city and for Bridgman Downs, for that land out there. I just want to reinforce, only one-third of our, of the money that we raise through the bushland levy is actually spent on bushland, only one-third of that money, so it is disappointing. Okay, thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Sri?
Thanks, Chair, it's time of my.
No, just, just hold a second. There you are.
Thanks, Chair, I speak on item C as well, and just wanted to highlight that I too am opposed to these asset sales. I don't think it's appropriate for council to be selling off this land to the private sector, particularly at a time when the property market is looking reasonably weak. It would seem more prudent to hold on to this land, if indeed we were planning to sell. Now's not the time, but I think there are other more appropriate uses of this land, not least potentially restoring some of it as vegetated green space, but also in some cases as affordable or public housing. The Lord Mayor made a few comments earlier about the Brisbane Housing Company, and I think it would be apt for this administration to seriously consider whether some of these blocks of land could not simply be gifted to the Brisbane Housing Company to deliver housing for people on low incomes. That's a very tangible, straightforward step that this council administration could be taking to address homelessness and housing insecurity. We know right across this city that on many occasions, there are people who remain in domestic violence situations because they don't have safe accommodation to escape to. There is, simply isn't enough crisis accommodation or affordable accommodation in this city for the people who really need it, and this administration could be playing its part to help address that by making publicly owned land available to organisations to deliver crisis accommodation support services and subsidised housing through agencies like Brisbane Housing Company. The model is already well established, we've seen other neighbouring councils like Loganstuy Council embark on similar projects, and I think it would be a far better use of this land to keep it in public ownership and, and use it for affordable housing and/or public green space and/or community facilities. There's, we, we need these sites for the benefit of the general public, and selling them off at this time does not necessarily make sense. Also, just want to echo councillor Griffiths' concerns about the misuse of the bushland acquisition levy, and invite councillor Cunningham to perhaps comment on and, and correct if she feels the need to. The statement that only a third of the bushland acquisition levy is used for bushland acquisition, I'd really appreciate a response from the Chair of News as to whether that is in fact correct, because that's very, very concerning that we're collecting all this money and not actually spending it on, on bushland. And I would also like to see a very clear indication of where the money from these asset sales is likely to be spent. I think it's important for the administration to state very clearly that if it is going to persist with selling off this publicly owned land, exactly what does it think that money should be used for? Thanks.
Further speakers? Further speakers? The Lord Mayor's not present, so we'll proceed to a vote. On items A and B, together items A and B, all those in favour, please say aye. And those against, please say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy.
Division.
And councillor Strunk. Please ring the bells. Thank you, and all those against, please say no and raise your hand. Thank you, and all those against, please say no and raise your hand. Thank you, please, clerks, please read the result when you're ready.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 18 in favour and five against.
The ayes have it. On, on item C, all those in favour, please say aye. Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Division. Time to make a decision. We've got to stand up.
Division.
Division, division called by councillor Sri and councillor Johnson. Please ring the bells. Councillors, all those in favour of item C, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you. And those against, please say no and raise your hand. Thank you. And abstentions, please. Clerks, please read the result when you're ready.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being twenty two in favour, one against and one abstention.
Thank you. The ayes have it. Councillors, I now draw to your attention the item of the, would you mind just reading that again for me?
Sorry, Mr Chair. The ayes have it, the voting being twenty one in favour, one against and one abstention.
Yeah, thank you. That makes more sense. The ayes have it. Councillors, the Infrastructure Committee decisions, please. And councillor McLaughlin.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of council during the spring recess 2020 on matters usually considered by the Infrastructure Committee be noted.
Second.
It's been moved by councillor McLaughlin, seconded by councillor Landers, that the report setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of council during the spring recess 2020 on matters usually considered by the Infrastructure Committee be noted. Is there any debate, councillor McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr Chair. There were three petitions which I'll get briefly in a moment, but before I do, I'd just like to provide the chamber with an update on some of the key infrastructure projects that are underway across the city. I had a bit of a busman's holiday during the recess and went around looking at some of the infrastructure projects that we're constructing. And very good projects are too and being well managed and maintained. First, I wanted to talk about an important milestone that we've reached today on the Indirpilly Roundabout. The business case for the project has now been finalised and as of this morning, the business case document has been made publicly available on the council website. This, Mr Chair, is a hundred and twenty six million dollar upgrade jointly funded by Brisbane City Council and the federal government and has a cost benefit ratio of a bit over two point zero and will support three hundred and eighty jobs for local residents and suppliers over the next four years, as well as providing a much safer design for those travelling through this dangerous intersection or around the current roundabout. Mr Chair, the team started with over twenty, with twenty possible design options which were gradually narrowed down with further planning and understanding of the project's scope and community needs. And during the community consultation last year, option two with an overpass was clearly preferred by the local community, which has been further developed. And those who have an interest in understanding more about how infrastructure projects are designed and planned, I encourage you to visit the council website and to read the business case document. We now look forward to moving into the detailed design phase for the project and looking forward to early works kicking off in 2021. Mr Chair, I did visit, as I said, some of the projects on around the city. A couple in particular I'll refer to in councillor Shree's ward. The Main Street and River Terrace intersection upgrade is powering ahead. This was a location where there was a significant number of crashes that have been recorded, particularly involving rear end and side swipe vehicle crashes. And the works being done there will certainly assist in overcoming that particular problem with the implementation of two dedicated right turn lanes and two through lanes on Main Street, southbound. The site last week was showing great progress and I'm sure that the team will be finishing it off as soon as they possibly can. I also went down, Mr Chair, to look at the Montague Road and Victoria Street intersection, to which councillor Shree referred earlier in this council. I am aware of a briefing note to some of the points that he raised earlier, that the briefing note to councillor Shree said through you, Mr Chair, that the majority of the construction work will be undertaken during the day. It's not envisaged this will be a substantial night time work, but works that will, a project that will need works to be undertaken at night, but it doesn't mean that there won't be on occasions the need for some night time work. I believe he has, Mr Chair, through you, Mr Chair, councillor Shree has written to the council project team about the location of the work site. I've had a look at that briefly during the time while we've been debating other items and believe that the site that is being selected is the best site. It certainly provides for the safe movement of plant and workers and that's something that's essential when we're undertaking these projects. Locating a compound on a roadway and with plant and workers coming out onto a moving roadway with drivers, cars going past, doesn't sound to me like a terribly good idea. And I think where the project team has selected is a good site. It's not a significant portion of the park, of Davies Park, it is a small corner portion of the park. However, the proposal will be considered, councillor Shree, to your point, and if the project team can come up with a better location that is as safe, I'm sure they'll consider it. The main body of those works, which is, I can see precisely what's being proposed there, which wasn't immediately obvious on paper when you're talking about an intersection upgrade. It is a significant little hill there and the works will take out that little hill and provide for a much safer through traffic of Montague Road intersecting with Victoria Street and provide for traffic lights and a pedestrian crossing as well, which will make much safer movements with that controlled pedestrian crossing at that location. So this work will be commencing soon and construction is due for completion in early 2021.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order to councillor Shree.
Will councillor McLaughlin take a quick question?
Councillor McLaughlin, will you take a question?
Sure.
Thanks, through your chair. Thanks councillor McLaughlin. Just with the River Terrace Main Street intersection upgrade, there was previously some conversation about also including a dedicated pedestrian crossing over River Terrace as part of that project or in support of that project. Could you update us on what's happening with that element of the project?
Councillor McLaughlin. Sure, councillor Shree. That's a separate, so councillor Shree refers to a proposal which is live to include a pedestrian crossing, signalled pedestrian crossing further down from the current project. It's not part of this specific project, but it will be undertaken at a future time with separate funding. With regard to the petitions that were considered during the spring recess, these were for, there were three petitions, a request for council to install traffic calming at and around the intersection of Morley Street and Gregory Street to Wong to make local streets safer, a second petition for council to implement traffic calming on Royal and Prince Streets, Virginia, and a request for council to install local area traffic management, local area traffic management plan near Bald Hills Road in Bald Hills. I'll leave any debate to the council chamber.
Further speakers? Further speakers? Councillor McLaughlin. I'll now put the resolution. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk. Please ring the bells. Councillors, all those in favour of the resolution, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you. And those against, please say no and raise your hands.
No.
Thank you. Clerks, please read the result when you're ready.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being seventeen in favour and six against.
The ayes have it. Councillors, the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee, please, councillor Cunningham.
Mr Chair, I move that the report setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of council during the spring recess 2020 on matters usually considered by the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee be noted. Second.
It's been moved by councillor Cunningham, seconded by councillor Landers, the report setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of council during the spring recess 2020 on matters usually considered by the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee be noted. Is there any debate, councillor Cunningham?
Thanks, Mr Chair. Item A is the bushland acquisition report for the year ended June 2020. In the financial year 1920, council acquired seventeen point one hectares of habitat through the bushland acquisition programme. We also smashed the seven hundred and fifty hectare target in December 2019. The properties acquired in 1920 were eight one eight Rhodey Road, Stafford Heights, ninety seven Chilton Street, Sunnybank Hills, one oh four Ritchie Road, Polara, two hundred and fifty six Green Camp Road, Wakely. Other than the acquisition of land through the programme, council also expended some funds in 1920 on cleaning up recently acquired properties. For example, demolishing houses and removing rubbish from acquired properties so that they can be restored and established as public conservation reserves. As a point of clarification, funds from the levy don't entirely go to the purchase of new property. Now, I know some councillors have raised questions about that, but let me put it really simply. It's because it costs money to manage land. You don't buy land and lock it up. Council has a bushland preservation levy.
Councillors, please allow the speaker to be heard in silence. Councillor Cunningham, please continue.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Council has a bushland preservation levy, not a bushland acquisition levy. With the bushland preservation levy, council preserves bushland. Look, continuing on the theme of bushland acquisition, item B in the report is the naming of four nine five Sir Samuel Griffith Drive, Mount Cotha as Sally Anne Atkinson Place. As many councillors will be aware, Brisbane City Council recently celebrated the thirty year anniversary of the bushland acquisition programme. It all began in 1990 under the leadership of then Liberal Lord Mayor Sally Anne Atkinson with the purchase of the twelve hectare site at four nine five Sir Samuel Griffith Drive. Sally Anne took the bold step to introduce the bushland preservation levy, a decision not without its detractors at the time, and the bushland acquisition programme was born. It was created not by a green Lord Mayor, perish the thought, but in fact a Liberal Lord Mayor. Over the past thirty years, council has invested about three hundred and fifty million dollars in protecting more than three hundred and ninety individual sites right across our city and suburbs, totaling more than four thousand three hundred and twenty hectares of land. The programme is something the Liberal and LNP administrations have championed and expanded and accelerated over recent years. We currently have natural habitat cover of thirty eight point nine percent in Brisbane and are Australia's most biodiverse capital city. We have a target to reach forty percent in time and this continues to be a focus of council on doing everything we can to expand and protect bushland in Brisbane. To celebrate the significant anniversary of the bushland acquisition programme, I had the pleasure of joining the Lord Mayor and Sally Anne last week at the first block that started it all. In recognition of her contribution and legacy, council has renamed this parcel as Sally Anne Atkinson Place, a fitting honour for a living legend of our city. Sally Anne Atkinson A O was Lord Mayor of Brisbane from 1985 until 1991 and was Brisbane's first and to this day only female Lord Mayor. She is a trailblazer, an inspiration to many, and her contribution to the city of Brisbane is ongoing, currently serving in a number of government and community roles and organisations. Naming this site is one way we can say thank you to Sally Anne. We say thank you for your foresight all those years ago. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for breaking down barriers. Thank you for continuing to be involved in the Brisbane community and being one of our biggest cheerleaders. Thank you for continuing to stand up for what you believe in. Thank you, Sally Anne. Other items considered in recess are two petitions, one relating to the Iron Bumpin Lagoon and another relating to VPOs in Holland Park. There is also a park naming submission, the commemorative memorial park node within Walton Bridge Reserve to be known as Memorial Place. I'll leave the rest to the chamber.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on item C. The petition requesting council promise to work with locals to improve the state of the Iron Bumpin Lagoon and surrounding park at Sangate. And I'd like to begin, Chair, by expressing my strong support for this petition calling on council to work with locals to improve the state of the Iron Bumpin Lagoon and the surrounding parklands in Sangate. Like all things, I think residents should have a say on what happens in their local community and I look forward to engaging in the consultation process to ensure we get this done. The Iron Bumpin Lagoon should be the vibrant, living, breathing heart of the Sangate village. We celebrate so many fantastic local community festivals and gatherings there like the Iron Bumpin Festival, Gardening at the Gates, Sangate Youth Festival, Carols by the Bay, outdoor movies, just to name a few. But sadly, after years of neglect under this LNP council, this northside landmark has experienced a plethora of issues, including the health of the lagoon and the wildlife that call it home. Sadly, this disregard for our outer suburbs is not unique to my part of Brisbane, Chair. However, alongside the fantastic Deegan Ward community, I've spent years campaigning to fix this lagoon and with funding secured in the most recent council budget to carry out the Iron Bumpin Lagoon management plan, I'm eager to get on with the job. It's time to make our lagoon a vibrant community space once again and I look forward to delivering this project.
Further speakers? Further speakers? Councillor Cunningham. I'll now put the resolution. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. We'll continue. Councillors, the Community Arts Nighttime Economy Committee, decisions, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the report setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of council during the spring recess 2020 on matters usually considered by the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee be noted.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Mackay, the report setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of council during the spring recess 2020 on matters usually considered by the Community Arts Nighttime Economy Committee be noted. Is there any debate, councillor Landers? Any further speakers? Councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Listen, I'm speaking in regards to the petition that's before us here tonight. Let me first say that McEwan Park, which is where this petition is, where this petition covers, has history in the suburb of Anala. McEwan Park was one of the first fields established, I'm told. This goes back many, many years, even well before former councillor Les Bryant was the councillor in that space. McEwan Park has always been a, well, I won't say always has been, but for the majority of its life, it's really been a significant site as far as sporting goes for the Indigenous community of Anala. And so when they came and saw me last year and said, listen, they would like to secure not just a licence but a lease over the field, I was in favour because I knew the history, a bit of the history, not all of the history, and because I did work in the area for about fifteen years. So I just knew that this site was quite significant to the Indigenous community, so I wanted to support them. We met with a number, as the petition says, we met with a number of council officers who were very understanding of what they were seeking to have. And that was a lease over the site so that they could once again call this home to rugby league. The South Anala Warriors are very proud of their history, which goes back, as I say, many, many years. They won a lot of comps over the years, but now sadly they really, they do practise on the site at night times. And by the way, it does have lights as well, so it's not a. And by the way, it does have lights as well, so it's not a field that is only used during the daytime, it does actually have lights. So it was a competition field back in the day. It's going to cost probably about $1.4 million to remediate it to a playing level again for a competition. I know that's a lot of money, they know it's a lot of money, but they would like to call it their home again. It does incorporate a clubhouse and some change rooms, but they're actually leased to a darts club who have been on that site with the clubhouse for a number of years as well, and they look after it. They're willing to work in conjunction with the darts club to maybe do a co-lease over the site. But anyways, as far as the petition goes, I want to support them in their goal to secure the lease. I think council should have another look at this because they actually have a lot of support behind them now. Now, I know that there's not a lot of signatures on the petition. We were working with them through the local state member as well, trying to look at what maybe some funding that they could attract from the state government. They have been looking with the federal government and working through some of their contacts down in the federal government as well, and it looks like they've secured some mentoring support to establish, re-establish the club and the governance and everything that is needed to get the club up and going again. So all levels of government have been pretty encouraging, and I'm just sad that council at this stage isn't willing to give them a lease just over the field, because I think as the petition says, council, it's usually the lease was, in previous times, had the clubhouse and the change rooms included. But if we look at three clubs that actually had a lease over this site prior to the South Anala Warriors coming back on board in 2016, they did actually have a lease, from what the papers say here today, that did not include the clubhouse. So I don't think that's a barrier, right? They just want the field at this stage, and they would just like to have a home. So I'll just end my comments here. Thank you.
Further speakers? The Binghamland councillor Landers.
As outlined in the petition response in the papers today, the South Anala Warriors Rugby Club will be able to continue using the site under the current seasonal licence arrangement. And further, as there are no clubhouse facilities available to attach to a lease as the existing building on-site is leased, as councillor Strunk said, to the Anala Darts Club. The current arrangements in regard to a seasonal licence over the sporting field is considered the best outcome for the community. Council has also advised the club of other sub-use opportunities in the local area in case they do not wish to continue using McEwan Park. Thank you.
I'll now put the resolution. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
And those against, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk. Please ring the bells. Councillors, all those in favour of the resolution, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you. So, excuse me, please hold them there. Thank you, and those against, please say no and raise your hands.
No.
Clerks, please read the result when you're ready.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 16 in favour and 6 against.
The ayes have it. Councillors, before I call for petitions, I just want to remind everybody that the sign-in book is here on the, what's normally the media table. Please come and sign in if you have not done so already. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. I have a petition here to reinstate a footpath.
Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I have got a petition on behalf of councillor Hammond refusing a development application lodged at 278 Gimpy Road, Kedron.
Councillor Shree.
Thanks, Chair. Via email, I've submitted a petition from residents of Paddington against highly disruptive LED billboards.
Councillor Hutton.
I've got a petition to install lights at Escape Park at Jinder Lee.
Any other petitions? May I please have a resolution to accept them? Councillor Landers.
Mr Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Griffiths, that all petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
And those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, general business. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an office of the independent assessor or councillor ethics committee order? There are none. Are there any ordinary matters of general business? Councillor Mackay.
Thanks, Chair. Every Friday, I do a little video called Five Minute Friday, and I keep the good residents of Walter Taylor up to date with the goings-on. And I thought I might do a Two Minute Tuesday every week, maybe not every week. First of all, I want to start off by saying I had great pleasure in delivering six beehives through St Lucia, Indrapilly into Wong, and I want to thank John, Don and others for helping perpetuate the good work that the bees can do in our community. Speaking of community, I've got community gardens going on in St Lucia, Turinga and Chapel Hill, and we've had the sandstone terracing completed in St Lucia, the special storage sheds coming next week in Turinga, and the Chapel Hill team is investigating their planterbox construction options, thanks to Anne and others for their patience and hard work. Hineside State School turned 150, we installed a commemorative boulder with a plaque and planted a brachia crighton belladonna. That's a tree, in case you're wondering there, Chair. Thanks to Phoebe and Tina for that. 100 ivory curls for an avenue along the walkway at Lambert Road in Indrapilly. The design is completed. I'm really excited to say that the jacarandas that we planted last year as part of the Lord Mayor's Jacaranda Programme are starting to bloom, as are the flowers in the Avenue of Remembrance in Anzac Park. Unfortunately, this afternoon, I had some very, very bad news. Some mature trees in Indrapilly have been discovered to have been drilled and had poison put into them, and these, we think, are protected poincianas. So I understand that the BCC arborists have been out there this afternoon, and I'm told they're flushing the trees, so read into that whatever that involves. In West Tuong, we had the West Tuong Bowls Club. I went down there and I spoke to them about getting them a grant for some solar panels for their clubhouse roof. They currently spend more than $12,000 a year on electricity, which is out of control. Thanks to Roz and Barry for their work there. The Tuong pedestrian underpass under the very busy High Street in Tuong has been painted, cleaned and made safe. It's a very popular hangout for day drinkers, so we're going to try and turn that around to try and make it a little bit safer. It's not an attractive, was not an attractive place. We've got big plans for the Tuong pedestrian underpass. Also in Tuong, Art Space has been, that's a local community art group, it's been, their building's been cleaned, painted, and we're talking about getting a root barrier installed, thanks to Cathy and her team. The speed limit on Harts Road and Myers Road has been reduced to 50 from 60, and this is to increase road safety past a school. And this has occurred after a 12-month campaign, thanks to Fiona and her friends for her support. Tuong Harriers is getting more improvements at Jack Cook Park. We're looking for rainwater harvesting, and thanks to Ross and the guys at one of Queensland's, sorry, Queensland's oldest athletics club. In Chapel Hill, we saw some artwork installed on a wall, and that wall was cleaned and painted, a very nice limestone. Sadly, I need to mention crime. Many election signs have been vandalised. It's strange that only blue ones seem to be getting targeted. And I should also mention that Indrapilly Police put out a crime alert. Forty-two cars were either broken into or stolen in our area in just two weeks. Of the 26, sorry, of that, 26 of them were left unlocked. So not surprisingly, police urge residents to lock their cars and hide their valuables. No, they weren't really broken into, good point. Unlawfully entered. And I say this, Chair, because we have a state member who wants to defund the police, who he calls racist killers on his Facebook page, which is out of control. Speaking about that, the Green Bridges have been claimed by the Greens candidate for Mewa.
Show me the money.
Well, he's already delivered the funding, according to his core flutes, which is interesting because I haven't seen anything about it. I'll note for the record that he did not even supply a letter of support, let alone deliver the funding for said bridge in St Lucia. Unbelievable. That's Trump-level fantasy. Finally, talking about AFL, the West Juniors are going to get some improvements. I want to thank Ian and the guys down there, they're doing a fantastic job servicing the AFL for the local juniors. Unfortunately, the Brisbane Lions lost and will not appear in this year's grand final, but I want to say thank you to all of the players and supporters of that fine team. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Thank you. I won't be long. Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. I rise to speak on the Cross River Rail project and council's role in approving changes to the road network in Annalee. And councillor Shree, you might be interested in this. It's come to my attention that the Cross River Rail project is seeking a change application around Dutton Park Rail Station, particularly impacting on Annalee Road, Cornwall Street and Kent Street within Tennyson Ward immediately to the south side of Dutton Park Rail Station. These are all council roads. I am extremely concerned and have made a submission to the coordinator general about the adverse impacts that will flow for cyclists, pedestrians, local residents and drivers who are going to be bombarded with hundreds of truck movements a day around a really constricted, already inadequate area for pedestrians and cyclists whose lives will be put at risk. Now, this project cannot happen unless council agrees to the road alterations that are proposed. Currently, B double trucks are queuing up on Annalee Road, queuing up on Fairfield Road, and they should not be doing that. The B double trucks do not have enough turning room on Annalee Road to turn into Kent Street and then make the turn into, sorry, to make the right turn into Cornwall Street and then make a quick left turn into Kent Street. They want to change the road configuration, and it will put lives at risk. I'm putting on the record today that if I find out that council has agreed to all of this behind closed doors without any discussion with me as the local councillor or our local community, I will absolutely, you won't even have seen angry. This is an area, this is an area where we have lobbied for many years to get better pedestrian facilities. There's no safe way to cross Cornwall Street outside a busy train station. You cannot see cars and trucks coming because of the configuration of the rail station. If council cooperatively works with the Cross River Rail project to facilitate these road changes, they will be putting lives at risk. Children have to cross these roads to go to school, there are cyclists on bikes constantly. I do not want to see people's lives put at risk. Council must say no to the state government. There is an alternative, which is the current truck path that is being used, which is out via the northern side of the hospital and O'Keefe Street. It is not acceptable for council to agree to changes to the road infrastructure that put lives at risk when there is already an alternative that has been working for some time. I have written to the CEO about this, I've written, as I said, to the coordinator general at the state level, and it will be unacceptable if council is behind the scenes working to facilitate these changes. And this is what council have done for years in my area. Yorongpilly Green, yep, no problem, council just agreed to it all. It is quite common for council to jump into bed with the state government and facilitate their projects. In this case, what they are proposing to Annalee Road, Cornwall Street and Kent Street is unacceptable. We do not want heavy vehicles using these streets in residential areas. There are dedicated alternatives that were included within the EIS a few years ago, something our community fought very hard to stop, is truck movements through residential streets. The houses around these areas are all tin and timber older properties, they're not well insulated from noise. This will be extremely disruptive. I urge council not to agree to any changes to the surface streets on Annalee Road, Kent Street and Cornwall Street to facilitate heavy truck movements. The current arrangements through the busway and O'Keefe Street should continue, and certainly council should not do any deals with the state government to facilitate these hundreds of truck movements a day on local roads in Annalee.
Further speakers? Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, I rise to speak to acknowledge an incredible milestone for Father Daniel Joseph Carroll, who over the past week celebrated 50 years of pastoral care at Darre Jinder Lee Parish. Fifty years. Fifty years is a long time to commit to doing anything, let alone a role that is completely devoted to serving others. It has been a lifetime of commitment, and it's hard for me to quantify what this man has done for my community. In 1969, Father Dan arrived in Jinder Lee as a young man in his mid-30s to commence his ministry. He began saying mass for a small number of local Catholic families in Joan White's garage at 24 Coombal Street, Jinder Lee. These families would each week carry wooden pews and kneelingers down the street from number seven to the garage at 24 Coombal Street to prepare mass each Sunday beside the Simpsons wringer washing machine shrouded in a calico sheet. These humble beginnings are far from the incredible church we see at Jinder Lee today. Father Dan's legacy has been his vision for the whole parish. As a shrewd businessman, his foresight, determination and wisdom has seen this parish grow and grow. He facilitated the construction of two churches and two halls at Darra and Jinder Lee, a preschool, sports ovals, tennis courts and the impressive educational institution, Our Lady of the Sacred Heart. Many parishioners have been involved in these projects over the years, but there has been one constant member, the parish priest, Father Dan. Father Dan's philosophy, every face has a place and every heart plays a part, has been his approach to my community. An example of this was in 1995, when Father Dan was the first priest in the Archdiocese to invest in youth leadership. He saw the gap, the need of my community, and took the huge step to invest where others didn't. The investment paid off as Darre Jinder Lee continues to be renowned for the strong youth following and the development of our next generation of changemakers. I couldn't begin to calculate how many masses, baptisms, first communions, confirmations, weddings, funerals and other events have filled those 50 years. I want to congratulate you, Father Dan, on your leadership and cultivating a faith-filled, loving, life-giving, inclusive and diverse intergenerational church. On behalf of my community, thank you for your dedication, thank you for your commitment to others, and thank you for your outstanding service to my community. Congratulations on the exceptional achievement.
Further speakers? Councillor Strunk.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Listen, well, some of the nicest things that we do as councillors is, in the case of what happened just the other week, is that we sometimes launch things or open things or, you know, there's special milestone moments, I suppose, as well. And last week, we launched a book on the Anala 4077 street names. Now, people would think, street names? Well, you know, that's fine, but what's the significance of launching a book on street names? Well, you know, that's fine, but what's the significance of launching a book on street names? Well, it was a master-planned community that goes back to when it was called Serviston and then unfortunately, that didn't, that wasn't, that group that actually started it up back in nineteen forty-eight, weren't able to carry on with it and the Queensland Housing Commission or the government of the day purchased the settlement and then proceeded to develop it. But the significance of the streets are that they're in groups. And the groups include shrubs and trees in one neighbourhood. There's birds, birds in another neighbourhood, names of birds. In another neighbourhood, it's constellation and stars. And in another neighbourhood, it's war aircraft names, well, Second World War aircraft names. So, and there are some other subgroups as well. So, when you talk to someone from Inala, they, and you say, where do you live? Well, they're likely to say, I live up in Lorkey Street, up in the birds. Or I live in Clipper Street, up in the stars. So it's a significant reference to where they live and sometimes people live in that particular neighbourhood for most of their adult lives. You know, maybe they grew up there and then they stayed. So, a gentleman by the name of A.S. Hogenbach, whose family had lived and still lives in the Inala area for many, many years, he decided that he would like to write a book and publish a book about the street names. And now, there's over two hundred streets in Inala, just the suburb of Inala, two hundred streets, which I was quite amazed, I didn't think there would be that many, but there is. Because a lot of our streets are very long, right, and take up a lot of road. But anyways, there's two hundred streets and what he did was, he came up on holidays and he walked every one of those two hundred streets. He took photographs, he did research as well, and he put together a book which a lot of people, I mean, we have a lot of history books in my area that have been published over the years, but one of the, one of the, one of the most popular ones, when we launched this, we sold, they sold over a thousand dollars worth of books just at the launch. And so I just want to pay tribute to him and his family, to him especially, because it was a lot of work, he didn't get paid for this, he didn't get a grant for this. Brisbane City Council, we, I made available through the Lord Mayor's Fund, about $2,700 just to publish the book. And it's a nice, good size too, by the way, it's really easy to see and read and understand what it's all about. And I just wanted to say that, to say it was an absolute pleasure to be able to launch the book along with Milton Dick, a federal member of Oxley as well, came along and former member for Inala, Henry Palichay was there as well. And it was just good to catch up and just see people actually, after the launch, just break into groups and just talk about their life, their experiences in growing up in an area that they are really proud of nowadays. We went through growing pains, I wasn't there, but I was told about the growing pains that we went through in Inala back in the sixties and seventies. But I tell you, it's a really mature, really great place to live nowadays and people wouldn't live anywhere else. They tell me all the time, you know, if I won the lottery tomorrow, I would still live in Inala. You know, may upgrade the house a bit and get a nice new car, but they would not live anywhere else. So, thank you. I just wanted to say a few words about the author and about this book. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I stand to just congratulate my community on a fantastic initiative that we launched quite belatedly due to COVID pandemic last weekend, which was the Taragundi Community Garden. And I thank the Lord Mayor for taking the time to come for the opening and councillor Marks, because not only is it a fantastic community garden, but it is a composting hub as well and the first that I have in my ward, so that now gives us the great opportunity to hand out the composting kitchen bins for the residents in Taragundi to contribute to the community garden. I have to say at this point, a very, very big thank you to the Wellers Hills Bowls Club and Richard and all of the executive board members there that have taken this on wholeheartedly as the auspicing community group for the community garden when it was first suggested to them, though they weren't quite sure, and once they got their head around it, they have been the biggest supporters there is. But none of this could have been done without the absolutely amazing, absolutely amazing Renee McBrien. She has dedicated herself to this community garden, as she does as a nurse at the Mater Hospital working with children, where she also does community gardens and loves getting everybody to get into the garden, get healthy, learn about eating healthy, learn about mental health and being in the community. It's a beautiful, beautiful area. The gardens have been set up lovely, there's a mural, it's just a lovely place to sit quietly. If you don't want to sit so quietly, you can pop into the Wellows and have a great ballistic beer as well. So, it's a fantastic community hub, but it's also a community garden, a composting hub, and I want to say congratulations to the Taragundi community, it's absolutely outstanding.
Councillor Adaman, well councillor Adaman has delivered his maiden speech, this is his first speech in this room, so I just wanted to, while it's not officially his first speech in this place, I'd ask with some level of courtesy, please, to the team, please. Councillor Adaman?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I rise to speak about the introduction of the personalised public transport service for Bell, Bowery and Moghl in the Pullenbale Ward. In doing so, I want to thank the Shriner administration for listening to my community and responding through the provision of this trial service. The need for additional public transport services, particularly in the western part of my ward, was identified in a survey undertaken by council late last year and was reinforced to me often in the lead-up to this year's council election. As we know, where bus services go and when are determined by the state government, so having them see reason can often be a challenge. Upon my election and subsequent appointment to the Public and Active Transport Committee, I discussed the findings of this survey with my colleague and Chair councillor Murphy, and I want to also acknowledge his role in helping deliver this PPT for my community. Prior to its introduction two weeks ago and in conjunction with council offices, we undertook a road tour of parts of the ward to promote the PPT. This included an information forum at the Sugarwood Grove Villas at Bell, Bowery, where a packed house of residents enthusiastically embraced this initiative. It was an appropriate, it was an appropriate venue, given that those who lobbied me the hardest for this were Sugarwood residents Shirley MacLeod and Peter and Julie Murray. The residents appreciate having access to a $1 hail-and-ride maxi taxi that can take them to the Bell, Bowery Shopping Centre and the local doctor's surgery or connect to the triple four service if they want to go to Kenmore, Indrapilly or even the CBD or South Bank for a day out. Mr. Chair, I would also like to acknowledge council's transport for Brisbane team under the leadership of Dr. Greg Spellman, who responded to feedback from residents and tweaked the route to ensure Sugarwood residents could be picked up literally at their front door. The early reaction to the Bell, Bowery Moghl PPT has been very encouraging. But this is a trial and how well it is used over the coming nine months will ultimately determine its future. Should it continue, we will take on board local community feedback and see if it's possible to provide a couple of extra runs in the middle of the day and add a stop to the new Moghl Shopping Centre, which is due to open in July next year. But for now, our most immediate challenge is for Bell, Bowery and Moghl to become a permanent fixture in the Pullenbale Ward and then ultimately ensure it becomes as popular as the neighbouring Corana Downs PPT service. My message to the Bell, Bowery and Moghl communities is the same today as it was when it was announced and that's, let's use it because we don't want to lose it. Thank you.
Further speakers?
Yes, I just have one quick thing.
Councillor Griffiths?
I know the meeting's about to close. I just wanted to let people know that a really good thing finally happened for me over the break, not marriage.
That's what you were going to say.
Not marriage. Not a dad, no, no, no. I know some people, I know some people have told me they got pregnant over the break and, good on them. Sorry about that. It's something I've been working on for a long time, I finally got the Coopers Plains Crossing. So, we've finally got it funded by everyone, so hopefully I'll stop talking about it now. Thank you.
Further speakers? Declare the meeting closed, goodnight, everybody.